And there will be an opportunity for public comment. Josh, you can go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council members. Nice to see you. I'm Josh Wees and with me is Devin Gaten. We're with Columbia Policy Advisors, the city's advocates here in Olympia. So let's see, I'm going to share my screen. Is that the right thing to do to go through the PowerPoint? Or do you have it there?
Go ahead and share your screen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I just did that. So going on to the next page. And I should have mentioned, feel free and interrupt if you have questions, or obviously happy to answer questions at the end as well. But what we are thinking tonight is we would cover just briefly what happened in the 2025 legislative session, both in terms broad strokes for the state, the cities in general, and for the city of Ellensburg specifically. And then we're going to start talking about the 2026 session and what we think at this point we can expect, and how we might use the time between now and the beginning of next session to prepare. So just jumping into what happened earlier this year, there were 1,900 bills introduced, 422 passed, only one was vetoed by the governor in whole. It's about a 22% passage rate, which is actually a little lower than normal. Generally, it's about 30%. I think that is reflective of a higher number of bills being introduced. I think what we've seen over time is that the legislative process can pretty much handle the number of bills that it can handle, and that number remains relatively steady. Lots of attention paid to the operating budget. The state started out with a revenue issue where their expenditures were going to be larger than what revenues were projected to be. At the end of the day, it was about almost a $78 billion biennial budget, two year budget. The governor did shave off $25 million in savings from line item vetoes that he made when he signed the budget. Even though there were reductions in the state budget, overall revenue was increased by about 8.2%, or spending was increased by 8.2%, and there was $4.4 billion in new revenue. It was an interesting budget because while there were increases and spending was increased in certain areas, there were also reductions and programs cut in other areas, not sort of your typical type of budget. In the transportation budget, we knew going in that it was going to be a pre-negative situation for transportation projects. We continue to see revenue, transportation revenue decreasing because less people are, or people are buying less gas than they used to because of more fuel-efficient cars and more electric cars. Gas tax revenue is the primary source of funding for our transportation budget. So they did pass a revenue package. This was essentially only to maintain existing projects and programs. There wasn't really any significant new programs in the transportation area, any new projects or programs that were started. And I do think that one of the things they did in the transportation budget was they indexed the gas tax to inflation, which will increase revenue from gas tax over time. That has postponed, I was just at a meeting last week, heard the chair of the Senate Transportation Committee talking about how he thinks that will postpone immediate conversations over whether to shift to some sort of non-gas tax-based revenue source for transportation like a road usage charge. So I think we won't be talking about that, implementing that, or moving forward with that for the short term. Capital budget was in pretty decent shape this year. At the end of the day, they spent about $7.6 billion. That's primarily through the sale of bonds. That's paid off in the operating budget. And just for, we'll talk about the capital budget and how the 13th Legislative District did here in a few minutes, but just for reference, the average local community project, which is what we usually are making requests in, was about $578,000 per project. So healthy and sort of normal, what we consider normal capital budget. Just for frame of reference about what other cities were focused on and what the Association of Washington Cities put their effort behind, a couple of their priorities, main priorities did pass. House Bill 2015 provides two new sources for cities and counties to receive money for not just law enforcement, but broader range of public safety funding items like behavioral health, indigent defense, criminal defense. So a pretty powerful tool that was passed by the legislature. Also legislation AWC supported that, I'm going to call almost a housekeeping bill, that has, House Bill 1811, that has to do with co-responders. Those are behavioral health individuals that are integrated into the law enforcement system to provide, to respond to individuals that are having a behavioral health issues at the same time that they're interacting with law enforcement. This just provided some definitions and some further clarity about what a co-responder is and what some of the rules and regulations that apply to them. Other AWC issues that weren't on their priority list, but that did pass, a pretty significant bill about lot splitting that mandates how cities deal with splitting of lots. Similarly, legislation that allows the use of unit lot subdivision, which is, or actually mandates the use of unit lot subdivision, which is a kind of a, to date, been a little bit of a niche way to move forward with developments. Those two were both intended as part of this legislature's intent to try and address affordable housing and get more affordable housing stock built in the state. Same is true with the condominium insurance bill. This is one of, boy, probably, I'm going to say, almost 10 years now, the legislature's been passing legislation trying to make our state condominium laws more friendly to builders so we can get more condos built. House Bill 1791 was, allows the use of real estate excise tax that is collected by local governments. Local governments Planning and Growth Management Act are allowed to collect REIT II. There are two real estate excise taxes. They, under prior law, they had to be used in different ways. This was a great local government bill, finely harmonized and said those two real estate taxes can be used for very similar purposes and allowing more use for maintenance and operation, not just to build new facilities. Longstanding local government priority. You may have heard there was a really significant recycling producer responsibility bill that was passed. And then legislation primarily focused on preparing for the World Cup next year, allowing alcohol service areas in public areas, but broader than just Puget Sound area. Couple of priorities that didn't pass for AWC, there was a bill that would have increased funding for the municipal criminal justice assistance account. This is just general money that the state passes through to cities and allows you to use for law enforcement purposes. That did not go through. There was a bill that AWC and other entities opposed, which didn't pass, so that was a good thing, that would have required local governments and private businesses to bargain with unions over the use of artificial intelligence. And both this bill and, you'll see the, on the other side of the column, the unemployment benefits for striking workers, which AWC did oppose and did pass, both of those were sort of seen as, you know, protecting management rights and the ability to manage appropriately staff at the local level. AWC was supporting a short-term rental tax bill that would have raised money for locals to provide affordable housing. And then there was legislation introduced that would have clarified that sales tax applies to storage unit rentals. Currently, that doesn't apply. And so that would have raised money for both the state and locals. There was a bill that passed, I already mentioned unemployment benefits for striking workers, but there was a bill that passed that mandates that cities not require parking with new developments. AWC and other cities have fought that for a number of years, but it finally got through this year. It does not apply to cities smaller than 30,000. So not a short-term concern for Ellensburg at this time. So that's, you can see sort of flavor of what was going on for cities generally across the state. For Ellensburg specifically, just a handful of items that we focused in on. First, the community fieldhouse funding. We were not going for this last year with a specific capital budget request. We really focused on legislation that was introduced by the 13th Legislative District in both the House and the Senate, that would have allowed the creation of a public facility district and therefore allowed the use of sales tax collections for these types of recreational facilities. Currently, there's only the option to do a citywide PFD or a countywide PFD. And this bill would have allowed more tale, like a more specific drawn map that can include portions of the county and a city. And this was really supported as well by constituents from the Cleland area, who are working on their recreation facility up there as well. We worked very closely with them. And actually, there were a lot of bumps in the road. I'm not going to go through really any of them at this point, but we did not get it all the way through. And I think there will be conversations about it potentially again next year. Kind of a complicated piece of legislation, a lot of questions, and actually some opposition from the Department of Revenue that would have had some costs from implementing it. We supported, asked for resources for the acquisition of the Pearson-Cutcheon property. We, you know, the city was ranked in the Flood Plains by Design Program, which is a capital budget grant, competitive grant program. There was ultimately, there was $75 million provided in the final capital budget for that program. We would have needed to have gotten to $96 million for, to reach the level of funding that we needed for this project. Oops, I'm sorry. And obviously, we didn't get there. We made a request as well in the local community project program for the money that we would have needed specifically for the project, but ultimately, as we'll see in a minute here, the 13th District did not prioritize that. And so, and we didn't get it through that. And that was the same with the Mountain View Park tennis courts. We also, this was ranked number 27 in the competitive grant program at the Recreation Conservation Office for the youth athletic facilities. There were only eight of those projects in our category that were funded, so obviously we weren't even close to making the list in the level the legislature provided. And similarly, we made a local community project request, but it was not included in that category either. So kind of disappointing on both of those. We also, as you recall, last year, received funding through the Climate Commitment Act for the city to complete a decarbonization plan for, particularly for your natural gas utility. We started out legislative session being a little bit concerned about overall funding levels in the Climate Commitment Act. And so we watched really closely the final budget on how they treated those projects. They didn't, you know, bottom line is, they didn't claw that money back. They did reappropriate it. And just having spoken last week with staff, I know that that is moving forward, and that's exciting to see. I'm not going to go through all of these to your relief, I'm sure, but when we talked about local community projects, actually, this, this is more than just the, what we call the local community project program. Some of these are broader, like the Centrals' secondary geothermal modules, not a local community project, but it is funded in the capital budget. We wanted to highlight that here because it was obviously a win for the community. But like the Othello rodeo bleachers, the Kittensas Valley Hospital Orthopedic Surgical Services remodel, the Senior Assisted Living Project, all of those are in the local community program. So if you recall, I said the average project was about just over $500,000. You can see that, you know, some of these in the 13th District were above, some of them were below. Overall, I think the 13th District did really well in relation to other districts. So your legislators did well for the broad 13th District. Unfortunately, just the projects that we were asking for in Ellensburg were not on this list. You can also note that the Upper Kittensas County Community Recreation Center, the Cleland Project that we were working on, the PFD bill with, received $155,000. So they received some help there. So starting to look forward to 2026. Interestingly, this is not an election year, but there will be nine legislative elections this fall in November, and that's because of, one Senate member died this last legislative session, obviously unexpectedly. So there was an appointment, but there will, that person that was appointed will need to run for that seat this fall for the rest of the term. And there were other individuals that were, for example, appointed to Governor Ferguson's staff, and now there are appointment, or there are positions that need to be filled. So none of those, we don't expect any changes in terms of House, sorry, Democrat versus Republican, significant majorities, like you won't see either of the chambers flip to Republican control. But it will impact sort of the overall tenor for next session. The Democrats passed pretty significant tax increases this last session. I think there are a couple of swing districts in particular that people will be watching to see whether or not they swing the other direction and put Republicans in those seats instead of Democrats. We are all anxiously waiting, as I know the city is as well, to see what continues to happen, particularly with sales tax collections. We know that revenues have been going down, haven't been as, as healthy as forecasted. There will be three revenue forecasts. The first one next week, that will give us additional information about what we can expect for the supplemental budget that we'll be coming into for the next session. This will be Governor Ferguson's first opportunity to write a full budget. It will be a supplemental budget, so just emergent and not the full biennial budget. But it will be a good indication of what his policy priorities are. And, you know, we've seen state agencies just this last week, were given direction to look for areas to be reducing spending. The state is bracing for additional reductions. We just don't know how much that will be. Though I do think the operating budget is going to be difficult, and we really probably should be talking about cuts type of budget and what we need to defend in highest priority, there will be opportunities in the capital budget. The additional tax revenue that the state is collecting in the operating budget will increase their capacity for capital projects. So that is another opportunity, I believe. It will be a 60-day, short 60-day session. Any bills that weren't introduced, that were introduced in '25 but didn't pass are still eligible for action in 2026. So, for example, the legislation I mentioned about collective bargaining over AI, artificial intelligence use for local governments, that will be on the table again next session for discussion. And the first day is Monday, January 12th. So for this interim, the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Priorities Committee, they just completed their poll and published the priorities that, suggestions they received from other cities. Perhaps some of you provided suggested priorities. That first meeting of that committee will be next Thursday at their annual conference in Kennewick, where I will be, and would be nice to see any of you. And they will be going through their tune-up priority process over the next couple of months. We should really, as city of Ellensburg alone, be thinking about outreach to our legislators, as well as other legislators that are leaders on issues we care about. We're still, everybody is in the position, I feel like, at this time of trying to get better acquainted with the governor's office staff and sort of his priorities and how he's going to be doing business, as well as new agency directors in positions of importance. And then preparing our legislative agenda, you know, it will be a short session. I already sort of indicated it's a good opportunity for capital budget requests, but maybe not too much else. If we are going to be making capital budget requests, I'd like to have those scoped and a pretty good idea of what they're going to be by October. I'd like to be, have, you know, legislators fully on board with that. And one of the learnings that we made this year with Governor Ferguson and a new, different approach, is he made vetoes out of the budget at a line item level that was really much different than we've seen, really, since, really, in my career. Part of it was just circumstances and the budget being soft, but part of it also just, we probably need to be working in some time to be briefing up governor's staff on a more detailed level than we have been doing with past administrations. So happy to answer questions. I put this cartoon in here, not as any sort of political statement. This is from, political cartoon from 1907. It's talking about commenting on how the state budget just continues to grow and grow, and I know that that is still relevant today. So some things don't change. That's what the intent of this comment is. I'm going to stop sharing and take a breath.
Awesome. Well, can I go into questions? Josh, thank you. Councilman Palmer here. First, thank you for the information. One quick note feedback for future presentation, can you make the text like Forex bigger than what it was? I'm sitting in a diocese and I'm having to turn my head to see it. I'm sure most of the audience was having the same issue. So if you could do that, the font at the top of each slide work well. So if you could bring it up into more slides so that everybody in the room could see that, along with your contact information. I've got about five questions that I'll try to go through really quickly. First is, you kind of talked about the capital budget process. For those that are not familiar with it, could you kind of talk really briefly on how the priorities for a district or a city gets assembled? You kind of mentioned a couple of the items where one item was 27th on the list. But just so people understand, the amount of priorities that a city or a district asks for, and how it's prioritized with legislators, and what is a percentage of those requests that often get funded?
So there are two, you know, rough categories in the capital budget. One are the grant programs that are jurisdictions need to apply to an agency, they're managed by an agency. So there, and there's rules and regulations about what needs to meet the criteria and how they'll judge those. And they will then put together a ranked list that goes to the legislature, and the legislature decides how much funding they want to put into that pot of money. And then the money goes down, as far down the list as they fund. And so that was both the youth athletic facilities for the tennis courts and the Flood Plains by Design for the property acquisition. Those are both agency-ranked grant programs that the agencies do the ranking and the prioritization. The second big category is the local community projects. There's some other smaller categories in the capital budget where legislators really get to put their sort of thumb on the scale and say, this is what I would like to prioritize in my district. They will get, to your question, they get, it does depend, I think, a little bit on district, but usually millions of dollars, millions and millions of dollars worth of requests. And they can, requests can come from local governments, they can come from community groups, nonprofits, you know, pretty much any sort of community entity that's a nonprofit can be eligible to receive one of those grants. And legislators really, for the most part, get to choose what they want to fund. They will be given by their leadership. Republicans right now tend to get a little bit less than Democrats, but they'll be given a number for their district, and they basically get to split up amongst their districts how they want to, what they want to prioritize and fund. And keep in mind, there's two House members and a Senate member, and the House and the Senate aren't always on the same page, and the House members aren't always on the same page. And at the end of the day, they need to all three agree on, on what the priorities are going to be. So there's a little bit of, you know, dickerie that goes on there as well. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, Josh, I really do appreciate that. And just for the general public, this speaks to the importance of partnership with our county partners and those kinds of stuff. As you can imagine, the more voices that go towards a request, or the more push for an item, those are a higher probability, or at least move up to the list, so that they have a higher percentage of possibly being funded. Four more questions for you. When it comes to, gosh darn it, don't lose your confidence here, some of those direct community impacts, this is a little bit for you and for the staff. Some of those items that were not funded, which of these is a big opportunity for the city to look at our budget on? And I'll speak specifically to the fact that it sounded like public safety got some acknowledgement. So is that an opportunity within the city to look at our public safety budget and say, all right, we got, we got more than we asked for, or what we were hoping for, and we got a deficit here in this budget? Is that an opportunity that we get to mess with the budget as we forecast?
I would say that wouldn't be a priority area at this point, because typically, you're asking for increases in revenue, which is, again, you're asking the taxpayers for additional dollars.
Gotcha.
So we've been, the three tenths of a percent for criminal justice in this community has really helped level off our, our public safety funding and helps us augment that.
Awesome. Thank you for that, Heidi. Third question is, going back to kind of the city budget. You mentioned that here we're going into the revenue forecast for taxes, and this will kind of hopefully provide us some forecasting for our capital budget. This is an ongoing thing, and this is more of a community education point, that over the course of the fiscal year, these things will change as far as our priorities based upon those revenue forecasts. Do you have any inkling on what that forecast is going to be looking like? Are we thinking it's going to be less than or more than anticipated?
Um, no, I really don't. Sorry. We'll have a good indication next week. The Revenue Forecast Council will come out with their indication. And just for, I'm sure you know this council member, but just for communities context, the state economic revenue forecast council is a state agency. It is staffed by economists. They look at all of the nationwide and statewide economic indicators, they, and they essentially put a report together a couple of times a year that then goes to the actual council itself, which are elected officials and state agency heads, and they approve it. So it's highly technical. And it's pretty good data. It's a pretty good indicator, you know, to the degree that you can do a forecast on economic factors, it's, it's very good.
Gotcha. My last two questions are really about transportation. The community, we've had a lot of dialogue regarding PTAC and funding for our transit system, and what does that look like in the next couple of years? We have had grants from the federal level. Is that correct, David?
Yes.
Federal. Have we had any of those, that, have we had any that came from the state level that are impacted by this projected deficit within transportation? Is that another issue for us right now?
We can go into more detail on that later, but the briefing that we received, PTAC, was that the transit funding was largely intact in the current budget. So no significant reductions in operating.
Okay. And just, this was just more of a curious thing of, do we think that grant funding from the state level for transportation will disappear in this next fiscal year or this biennium, or if it's intact? That might be more of a question for you, Josh.
Yeah, I can take a shot at that. I think generally, we're feeling like transit and transportation money is probably okay for the next biennium. They sort of patched the whole short term. And the other thing I would say specifically about transit funding is that a lot of transit projects recently have been funded by Climate Commitment Act dollars, because they are seen, transit is seen as a way to get people out of their cars and reduce carbon emissions. So they've been spending those, those funds on those kinds of projects. And, and, you know, there's no indication that the Climate Commitment Act dollars are not going to be robust for the relative near term.
Okay, so that's still an opportunity within agencies to be able to ask for funding is with the CCA funds to supplement or support part of the transportation. All right. Thank you.
Correct, correct.
I want to get to public comment, too.
I just had a quick question. Thanks, Josh. Councilman Miller here. You mentioned three revenue forecasts. I assume those are quarterly, so June, end of June would be the end of the fiscal year, then probably what, end of September, and then year end?
The year-end one is end of November.
Okay, leading into the new session. Okay, thank you.
And that forecast will be the one that, I had a point on this, but I know you couldn't read it, that that will be the one that Governor Ferguson bases his supplemental budget on, and we'll see that supplemental budget in early to mid-December. The legislature picks that up, and then they'll take it under advisement and do their own thing.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience wish to speak to this issue online? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to item seven, which is public comment on non-agenda items. I don't think I need to do anything. Just this period. Okay. When recognized, approach microphone, right side of the room. State your name, whether you live in the city of Ellensburg, Kittensas County, or elsewhere, whether you're representing yourself or others. Comments are limited to three minutes. Submit comments to, written comments to the city clerk. Speakers are cautioned not to make comments of a personal, impertinent, or derogatory nature. Speakers may not identify themselves as candidates for elective office, or make any statements which assist or discuss the campaign of a candidate for elective office or the campaign for or against a ballot proposition. for or against a ballot proposition. Each speaker, again, speakers are cautioned not to engage in conduct that disrupts or disturbs or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the council meetings. Speakers may not identify them. Oh, you already did that one. Speakers providing comment in non-agenda items may only address items under which the concern city business and/or which the council has control. You must announce your topic before you begin to speak and please note, city council rules provide no action will be taken by the council at the meeting at which a subject is first introduced during the citizen comment period. Council may consider an item at a future meeting. Thus, you may wish to concisely state your concern and request placement of your issue or matter on a future agenda. Staff will follow up with speakers as necessary. So we have Tylene Cornell, DEI. And as you're walking up here, I just want to check, is my online, I do have somebody online. Are they online? I just want to make sure I get them in order. I'm not just talking.
You have, you have one person online, but I do not believe they registered 24 hours in advance.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Tylene Cornell, resident of Ellensburg, speaking for myself and maybe others. I've heard it said here many times how Ellensburg is a warm and welcoming place and for the most part, I would agree. At these meetings though, while one is at the podium talking about how warm and welcoming Ellensburg is, others turning around, pointing, commenting amongst themselves and laughing doesn't feel very welcoming. At these meetings, being referred to as a groomer, a pedophile, as beastly, does not feel very welcoming either. I've lived here for almost 25 years. Since moving here 25 years ago, I've worked for an assisted living facility as an activities coordinator. We went to plays, the rodeo, we barbecued, we went out for lunch, we recognized and celebrated anniversaries and military experience. I created and facilitated a clubhouse model psycho-social rehab program for folks with mental illness. In the first year of our employment program, our folks who started working earned and spent $100,000 in this community. I graduated CWU. I sat on the homeless and affordable housing committee. I've gone through the Ellensburg Police Department Citizens Academy. I started Helen House, named after Helen Wise, so queer and trans youth and adults can have a place to find support and community. And I'm founding board member of a nonprofit here in town that's in our eighth year, providing free legal support and representation to immigrants, refugees and asylum seekers, helping folks acquire or maintain their work permits, T and U visas, green cards and more. The second annual youth summer kickoff a week ago for organizations to come share what opportunities they offer for our youth throughout the summer was my brainchild. I'm not telling you all this stuff to be bragging. I'm telling you this because I want you to know that I care about this community, the people in it, and have tried to be engaged in making it a better, more welcoming place for everyone. From what I've heard here though, I don't think that matters to some folks because they see a transgender person. And that defines everything they want or need to know about that person. I am trans, but I'm many other things as well. I'm a parent, a grandparent, a friend. I consider myself a person of faith. I've been a member of the Unitarian Church and the Methodist Church. I try to live my life according to the word. I see them as good guiding principles, but I'm not perfect. As I said, none of that matters though because I'm trans. Apparently that's a hurdle I have to jump before I can even be seen as a valued member of this community, as having a place at the table. As long as that hurdle is there for myself and others like me, others that have hurdles because of their skin color, their orientation, identity, cultural background, religious beliefs, physical and mental health needs, socioeconomic status, et cetera, there will always be a need for diversity, equity and inclusion conversations and programs. And lastly, I've heard a lot of talk about protecting our children. As I've said in conversations with some of you, we are not who you need to protect your kids from. Everyone, and I mean everyone in my circle, will stand with everyone in your circle to keep our kids safe in this community. Thank you.
Okay. Is this on? Good evening. My name is Beryl Kelly. I'm an Ellensburg resident and I'm representing myself. I am addressing the issue of removing DEI chapter from the comprehensive plan. My concern is over conflict with federal law. Through a FOIA request with the city of Ellensburg, I received a copy of an April 24, 2025 letter from Sean Duffy, Secretary of Transportation, to all recipients of DOT, USDOT funding. I will read a few words from that letter. I write to clarify and reaffirm pertinent legal requirements to outline the department's expectations and to provide a reminder of your responsibilities and the consequences of non-compliance with federal law and the terms of your financial assistance agreements. It is the policy of the department to award and continue to provide federal assistance only to those recipients who comply with their legal obligation. Whether or not described in neutral terms, any policy, program or activity that is premised on a protected class, including discriminatory policies or practices designed to achieve so-called diversity, equity and inclusion or DEI goals, presumptively violates federal law. Any discriminatory actions in your policies, programs and activities based on prohibited categories constitute a clear violation of federal law in the terms of your grant agreements. Adherence to your legal obligations is a prerequisite for receipt of federal assistance, financial assistance. Non-compliance will jeopardize your continued receipt of federal financial assistance. Proactive engagement is strongly advised to prevent inadvertent non-compliance. Questions. What is the city of Ellensburg doing to assess the conflict between our comprehensive plan and the DEI commission and federal law? Was city council aware of this letter before I mentioned it? Are you willing to gamble that your DEI policies will not cause a loss of federal funding? How are you going to replace the $3.9 million two-year grant for central transit and the other millions of dollars in federal grants that Ellensburg receives? Raising our taxes over your stubbornness is not an option. Additionally, reverse discrimination is still discrimination. The Supreme Court's recent decision reinforces this. You cannot elevate the marginalized without squashing others. The DEI commission seems to enjoy handing out taxpayer dollars for pet projects, but when will DEI commission address goals in the plan for translating the city webpage in forms to make it easier for our large Hispanic population to interact with the city? For example, to pay their utility bills? The city council seems to be in competition with the city of Ellensburg for reader.
Go ahead and wrap it up, please.
For filing bankruptcy. Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Patterson. I am a county resident. I'm going to be speaking on the DEI removal from the comp plan. So it's not that we wanted to have DEI removed as a commission. DEI should be removed from the comp plan. Chapter nine from the DEI should be removed from the comp plan. The state requires you to have in your comp plan, your land use element, your housing element, a capital facilities plan, a utilities plan, a rural element, a transportation element, an economic development element, a parks and rec element, and climate change and resiliency element. I've said all this before. So I keep, going to go through more cities that I went through that do not have DEI in their chapters. So I went to Langley, Washington, Calso, Washington, Pasco, Washington, Richland, Granger, Toquilla, Snoqualmie, Monroe, Clarkson, Puyallup, Everett, Lacey, Ritzville, Quincy and Linden. Those are the ones I went to this time. Nobody that I have come up with yet has any DEI element in their chapters. So I think that we as a city need to be looking at the removal of the chapter. Not saying you can't still have the commission. The commission has lots of value and can bring to these other organizations and the other chapters. I also would question why, when I started looking at them this time, so now I'm like on 35 or 40, many of these cities, well over half of them this time, all have their comprehensive plan done. Some of them are in their final draft. Everett's in their final draft. I question why our city is just now even getting started when over half of the cities that I'm going to have already completed theirs through 2044. So, thank you.
Lang, excuse me.
Hello, my name is Angela Lang. I'm a resident of Ellensburg and I am here representing myself. Can you hear me? Okay. And I'm here to talk about Craig's Hill and Memorial Pool at the same time. In chapter five of the city of Ellensburg Comprehensive Master Plan, it states the plan represents the needs, desires and recommended priorities of the community in relation to parks and recreation. It further states that the park and rec department maintains the pool. I disagree with that. If they maintained the pool, the roof would have already been repaired, or I should say replaced. For over a decade, parents have been asking for repairs to be made on the pool building. Currently, the decrepit roof and falling debris from the ceiling poses a major safety hazard and concern not only for the structural integrity of the building, but for the residents who use the facility, especially the children, disabled and elderly. Parents have also attended city meetings for years with the same plea, replace the broken park equipment and add a splash pad. Unfortunately, the needs of their children have been ignored. The priorities of parents do include having the safe, fun recreational facilities and parks in which our children can play and enjoy. Constructing splash pads and updating equipment in existing parks makes more sense than constructing new parks with multimillion dollar price tags. Ignoring the needs of existing neighborhoods, like the Mountain View Park, that's where I grew up, the play equipment has been the same for forever. And instead of replacing broken equipment, it's just, it has disappeared. There's nothing there. That's wrong. Craig's Hill is also mentioned in chapter seven. The slope immediately south of the Kiddatass County Fairgrounds extending around the base of the water tower is a geologic hazard area. The plan states that the E5 goal is to protect members of the public and public resources and facilities from injury, loss of life or property damage due to the landslides or steep slope failures, erosion, seismic events or flooding. I have watched the entire hill for over 21 months. I have witnessed a rock slide directly behind me. I have videoed the slope behind the Frontier Village and Barnes as the rocks ripple down the wave and, or the slope in waves all across. On May 28th, 2025, we're just talking this last month, I took a photo of a large fissure in the ground between the water tower and the new pump station. I believe all proposed construction of Craig's Hill should be scrapped. I need you to please call the experts. The fissure is quite wide and quite long and it is in the middle. Water tower here, there's a fissure here. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Amanda Russert. I live here in Ellensburg and I am the director of our town's queer nonprofit and safe space, Helen House. I moved here five years ago to study education, planning to leave after graduation, but then I found Helen House. I found community, a sense of belonging and saw just how urgently this rural town needed a space like it and that's why I stayed. I'm here because I keep hearing that diversity, equity and inclusion, DEI, is divisive or worse, that it goes against American values. Let's be honest, the constitution didn't originally include people like me. It didn't include women. It called black people three-fifths of a person, but it was designed to evolve. That's what makes this country powerful, not perfection, but the possibility of becoming better. DEI is a part of that work. It's not some radical new idea. It's about living up to the promise that all people deserve dignity, access and a voice in the places they live. And I've also heard the argument many times that this is a Christian nation built on Christian moral values, but our founding documents don't mention Christianity. They mention liberty, freedom, justice. Our founding fathers, many of them deists, intentionally separated church and state to ensure no single religion would control our government. That's not a rejection of faith, it's a protection of it. It means this country belongs to all of us, not just those who share one belief system. DEI doesn't erase religion, it doesn't threaten morality, it reflects the core American idea that everyone deserves to belong regardless of who they are, who they love, what they look like or what they believe. I didn't stay in this town because the work was done. I stayed because it was clear how much still needed to be done and how much this town needed a space like this, Helen House. So when I hear people say DEI is divisive, I ask, divisive to whom? Because to those of us who spent our lives on the margins, DEI isn't division, it's finally being seen. That's not un-American, that's exactly what America is supposed to be. Thank you.
I'm Hannah Frieden, a resident of Ellensburg and I represent myself. I want to thank all the city council members for listening to public comments regarding the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Commission and encouraging people to participate in the activities this commission provides. There have been plenty of public comments stating concerns about DEI that are not specific to the city of Ellensburg Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Commission goals and actions. These comments are made by people who sincerely believe that this commission is doing things it is not. Examples such as experiences in a work-related DEI training, thinking that the commission forces everyone to be accepting of all people when it's clear that some don't want to. That's a choice and the commission doesn't make them. I heard the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Commission is anti-Christian. It is not. I've heard bigotry inappropriately connected to scripture. No one is being forced to open their minds and hearts because of this commission. There are no trainings that tell white men they're bad, as apparently happened in a workplace training. Christians are welcome and many do attend events, so do members of the Latino community as well as people from other cultures. This commission is not telling anyone what to be or what to believe. Instead, it gathers information about the entire community in an effort to make sure everyone feels heard, seen and with a sense of belonging. What the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Commission actually has provided are events such as the World Cafes, which are wonderful. I encourage people to go there, strangers hear each other. Listening tours where the city listens to segments of our community that are not well-connected to the whole community. The CWU Campus and Community Dialogue Event to facilitate connections. Cooking classes that promote healthier eating on a budget. Grants that provide bail for low-income people and things like ski gloves for youngsters. My main concern is that the public comments regarding the LGBTQ plus community may foster harm. In 2015, a friend of mine in his 70s was beaten, as was his husband. Two men in their 30s felt justified to beat them because the couple was holding hands while walking in public. My friend died six weeks later. Bigotry connected to scripture may give someone a sense of justification to cause harm and I do worry about this. I hope that you all continue to encourage everyone to attend events that are hosted by the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, pardon me, this commission so that everyone can learn that this commission, what this commission actually does, which in my experience helps bring people together and make our community stronger. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Susan Waddell. I speak for myself, represent myself. I live in the city of Ellensburg. Last time I spoke, I promised myself I would write notes. So I wrote a list. I understand DEI is originally acted as a study group. I have read some of what it has done and I brought a very incomplete list of.
me, this commission, so that everyone can learn that this commission, what this commission actually does, which in my experience helps bring people together and make our community stronger. Thank you for your time.
Susan Waddell.
Hi, my name is Susan Waddell. I speak for myself, represent myself. I live in the City of Ellensburg. Last time I spoke, I promised myself I would write notes. So I wrote a list. I understand D E I is originally acted as a study group. I have read some of what it has done. And I brought a very incomplete list of persons who I support being included in equal rights and consideration by city council. At the start, let's see, blah, 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 blah. There are people, okay, here, who have changed their identities. There are African-Americans, Latinos, Mexicans, hunters, Republicans, Democrats, agnostics, police, volunteers, taxpayers, gay kids who eat pizza, congenital twins, gays and lesbians, music lovers, a 98-year-old woman, a friend of mine who died today, a child, a friend of mine who turned three today, daughters of the American Revolution, college kids, people with autism, rodeoers, electricians, Asians, Persians, people of Western European descent, people with only one leg, people without legs, people with two legs, people with two, without two hands, congenital twins, bisexuals, atheists, Christians, juvenile delinquents, elders, straight people who love musical theater, gay people who love musical theater, people whose ancestors came over on the Mayflower, people who have Neanderthal DNA, well-behaved juveniles, foster kids, foster parents, adopted kids, unwed moms, people who have been in jail, people with disabilities who like to swim in our city pool, people who celebrate Ramadan, people who celebrate grandmas, people who love their mothers, people who don't speak to their mothers, cat ladies and cat gentlemen, Western Europeans, Australians, Chinese students, Japanese students, lifelong learners, plant-based eaters, sheriff deputies, veterans of foreign wars, World War II vets, people who like to reenact history, people who like to quote Bible verses, alcoholics, sober alcoholics, flag waivers, clean drug addicts, people who like to camp, people who like to go to open mic and sing and recite poetry, veterans for peace, capitalists, flag waivers, caregivers, librarians, communists, persons from Peru, skinny people, overweight people, people in wheelchairs, bodybuilders, food bank workers, cancer survivors, people who keep secrets, people who hide their true identity for fear, homeless folk, skateboarders, Jesus freaks, peaceniks, tie dyers, artists, dancers, lovers, friends, you, and I. Thank you.
Andrea?
Yes.
Adriya Bessacek Donos, speaking for myself, county. I left early last time. It was hard. I have a family. I like my family. I like to hang out with my family. And I know you guys do too, with your families and your friends. But I did go home and listen, and I saw, and heard again tonight. I don't hate you. I don't hate you. I don't hate the LGBTQ. I shop at those stores with the pride flags. But it does make me sad that there is a list on Ellensburg Indivisible that says, don't shop here because these people don't support you. I don't have a list. I don't think there should be a list. That's very un-indivisible. And then, if I can, I do try to shop local before I go to Amazon or Yakima, right? So I think that just doesn't sound very indivisible to have a list. Then there's Chapter Nine that looks at people through a lens, waiting, anticipating that someone will make a mistake, looking, looking for the biases, looking for me to make the mistake on the playground. I don't believe that all the kids can be friends, and I think that we need to remember that. Not all kids will be friends. But we can learn to live and teach each other how to live in a comfortable society together. One thing I noticed about Chapter Nine and our introduction for our comprehensive plan is what they uphold and say they value and what they don't, by omitting what they, you know, to not say that they uphold family, they don't say family. The only time that family is listed in the whole introduction, when it talks about the hearts and values of our community, is when it says family-friendly events, which to me is not a 13-year-old inclusive in trans, in whatever. I don't even want to talk about it. Okay. So what they do uphold is things that are non-Christian, specifically stated, as even in today, when they're listening tours. They only want to do things that are non-Christian. So then I was like, okay. I Googled all the churches that Ellensburg has. And I'm, I'm not, I can't say this church is Christian, that church isn't Christian. I don't know. So I went through, if they say that they are Christian, I included them. I got about 24. Majority of them are in our valley, right? So if you put 100 people per church, that makes about 240,000 people are being excluded from your listening tours. That's a big deal, right? Then there's that national holiday issue. Not arbitrarily chosen for the Ellensburg government buildings. To dismiss them is a slap in the face of the people who fought for those holidays. And I think that's something that we need to take into consideration. That whole Kindness Day, love it. It should be every day. It shouldn't be a day. And that should not be on our public buildings, on any of our city halls, or anything that we, that is not a reason that you guys don't have to go to work. That more, it's, there's other holidays. And I know I'm really broken up. I'm, I'm really agitated. I'm so sad. I'm sad from the last, from the last meeting. Because you guys, I don't hate you. I just don't think that it's being fair.
So I just want to confirm, I do have somebody signed up that qualified, that is a non-agenda item, but I'm not seeing them on. Just I'm confirming that Fidel Miller's not on the.
Fidel Miller is not online right now. She did sign up, but she is not online.
Okay, thank you. And we will move on. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak on non-agenda items? Same rules.
Hi, I'm Ally Dermond, Allison Dermond. I have lived in the City of Ellensburg more or less 20 years. And I am speaking on my behalf. And I want to speak in support of the D E I Commission in a new way tonight. And that is going back to our nation's experience with George Floyd's murder, and what that did for a lot of people, myself included. And it's not easy. It's not an easy journey to look inside and face your own racism. And it's not an easy thing to feel that defense come up, feel that defensiveness come up of like, wow, that, that makes me a racist. I'm being called a racist right now. And so learning to listen to when I became defensive, when I felt the most defensive, and saying, actually, that, that's a learning opportunity for me right now. I have something I need to learn. I need to listen. And so that when somebody is sharing their blackness right next to me, I don't immediately come, become defensive and think, oh, I'm being called out as a racist. That's not what anybody meant. Somebody was just sharing their blackness in front of me. Also, suggesting that perhaps D E I is waiting for me to make a mistake. That's not actually the case. You might do something that causes somebody to revile, but hopefully that's a learning opportunity for you. We all have to kind of face where we come from. As a white person, I come from a lot of privilege that was on the backs of minorities and people who were subjugated. And what D E I allows us to do is, is get past that, to bring those voices and bring that culture together and celebrate those differences. Yes, celebrate differences, who we are. How cool is that? Culture and color and vibrancy comes from a diverse group of people gathering together and sharing ideas with each other. That's what D E I is. However, with our current federal administration, D E I has been given a very bad name. It's a swear word now. And so we have extreme MAGA Republicans sharing that idea, brainwashing y'all. And it's time to just simmer back down and start thinking critically about the messages you're hearing and what they mean.
We're up to time. Thank you. Okay, we got time for one more in our 30 minutes, if anybody wants to, or we'll move on. You got sweater?
Hi, my name's Anastasia Newman. I am a resident of Ellensburg, and I am representing myself. I left here two weeks ago, and there was a lot of big feelings there. So the fear of being compliant for the sake of governmental money and grants is terrifying. There is a much larger picture here. And while many of us have had different kinds of privilege, such as housing, food, a supportive network, mental health care, the ability to buy a car and pay for health insurance and gas, we're so lucky. I struggle to understand where Christians faced discrimination in Ellensburg, Washington. I am not pushing my LGBTQIA agenda on anyone. And the reason I am loud and proud is because there are people who are scared, who feel alone, and do not feel represented. There are people who are in homes where they are chipped away at every day, tolding, being told they are wrong for not checking the boxes the way that some people feel they should. I wear a rainbow, and I represent myself the way I do, because I lead a safe, happy, and healthy life, because I stopped repressing myself. And I guess my other big thing is the level, sorry, the level of planning that has happened, even with the parks and the bus stops, to make the transient and the homeless population deeply uncomfortable to stay in Ellensburg is concerning to me, because it doesn't just affect them, it affects everybody else as well. The shorter benches at the bus stops with the bars aren't exactly safe for everybody. They should be longer and more supportive to everybody involved. The coverings at the park downtown have slats them. There is no protection from the weather. If you're out with your family and it starts to rain, like, and the business might be closed and whatever, there's no, there's no weather protection from the very moody weather of Ellensburg, Washington. And the, there, there was talk last time about how the, the accessibility for people with different levels of disability at that park are lacking. There's not a lot of chairs and et cetera. Something needs to be done. We need to stop discriminating against the homeless and transient population that are not, are often not in that position because they want to be, but because they've been knocked down, and they not, they have not had the privilege of having the ability to rent an apartment, buy a house, or have the ability to store food. When you're homeless, you don't have the ability to store food. So please enjoy going home tonight and think about that while you're in your bed.
Okay, we're just out of our 30 minutes, so we are going to move on.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion for adding 20 minutes for any additional comments at the end of the meeting?
You can make whatever motion you want.
I'm gonna make that motion, if needed. If it's not needed, then, yeah.
Second.
Is there a show of hands who wants to still speak?
Who hasn't already spoken?
Yeah, yeah.
Not now. We're asking you to end it at the end.
You're, you're at, you're proposing at the end or now?
At the end.
Oh, okay.
Can we make it 10, since there's only two people?
10.
Okay. So the motion second to add 10 minutes to the end of the meeting for, I did. I'm breaking all my rules tonight. Yeah, it's gonna be a wild night. Just saying. Motion second to add 10 minutes for public comment at the end of the meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I too would aye opposed. Okay, that motion passes. Okay. Item 8A, which is page 98, this is a public hearing, and my new lawyer gave me a big, long script to read. So I gotta find it. I think he gave me some. Single-sided, not, not size four font. So I'm not sure anybody listens to this part anyway. I'm gonna start reading. Okay, this is a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting six-year city transportation improvement plan, or better known as the TIP. This is 2026 to 2031. The purpose of this hearing is to consider said motion, or said plan, and provide an annual complete streets update and receive comments on these items. So there will be an opportunity for public comment. The public hearing is now open, and we ask for your cooperation in the following procedure. Everyone will be given an opportunity to be heard. The city clerk will be making a recording of the proceedings. If you wish to participate in the hearing, and you are virtually, you have to raise your hand or press star nine if you're on a phone. We'll get to that when we get to that. You should, okay, so anytime you come to the dais, begin by stating your name, address, indicate whether you're speaking for yourself individually, or a spokesperson for a certain group, or both. Your testimony must only address the matter under consideration of this hearing. Any questions of staff are to be directed through the council. Each person will have an opportunity to address the council for an initial period not to exceed five minutes. And if more time is needed, it will be made available after everyone has had an opportunity to speak. But before we hear from the audience is there a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. My name is Josh Mattson. I'm the Assistant City Engineer in the Public Works Department. In accordance with city code, staff is providing an annual complete streets update. City is also required by law to annually update its six-year transportation improvement plan, also known as the TIP. This is adopted by council annually through a resolution. So the staff report, just like last year, is in two parts. First, we're going to do the complete streets update with 2024 completed work and 2025 planned work, as shown on your TIP form. And then the second part of the presentation is for the 2026 to 2031 six-year TIP, including a summary of various capital improvement project categories. So to begin the first part of our annual complete streets update, the city adopted a complete streets ordinance back in 2016. The purpose of this ordinance was to ensure that planning for construction of all city transportation improvement projects accounts for all users, including active transportation for those of all ages and abilities, transit, motorists, emergency responders, and freight. Included in this slide is a list of transportation projects completed in 2024, all of which included complete streets elements, such as sidewalk extensions, shared use pathways, bike lanes, street surfacing restoration, and ADA sidewalk upgrades. And that last one, if you can't read it, that's the 2024 complete streets improvements, where we did a lot of gap filling in our sidewalk with an unanticipated transportation improvement board grant off 15th Avenue, also next to the Ellensburg Christian School, and various locations on the corridors for Wall, Washington Avenue. And also, we filled a Alder Street gap as well, sidewalk gap on the east side of Alder Street. Next slide here. This chart depicts the funding sources for last year's transportation projects. From the chart, you can see Ellensburg is heavily dependent on securing grant funding for transportation capital improvement projects, accounting for about 75% of the costs for completed projects just in 2024. The city is very proactive in securing funds from many different sources, including SS4A federal implementation funds, federal transportation alternatives funding, distressed county sales and use tax grants, federal transportation block grants, federal redistribution allocations, safe routes to school grants, and, one I mentioned already, transportation improvement board grants. Those are state funds. So a quick summary there of the money we used last year. For 2025, as evidenced by the list of current transportation projects here, the city is committed to improvements that include elements for all transportation users. This list for 2025 projects includes street surfacing improvements, corridor beautification, bridge preservation, ADA upgrades, bike lanes and sidewalks, and several sidewalk and bike route connection projects are currently in design and planned for future construction. This year, we're completing a grind and asphalt overlay of Water Street from Manitoba Avenue to Bender Road. Also included is Manitoba Avenue from Main Street to Water Street. I'm sure you've already noticed, we've been reconstructing 145 non-compliant curb ramps, currently being upgraded to meet current ADA standards. The project also includes improved vehicle detection with vehicle classification and traffic count capabilities at the five signalized intersections within the Water Street corridor. This project should be completed by the end of September. The Finning Road sidewalk extension project is scheduled for completion this summer. This three- This three-block section of Finning Road was lacking frontage improvements. The project installed curb, gutter, sidewalks, and stormwater improvements, the extension of the bike lanes and frontage improvements connected to existing facilities at Vantage Highway and at Radio Road. Final punch list items will be completed in addition to the contractor-funded replacement of curb and gutter that didn't meet minimum strength requirements, and that'll be done this summer. As with the previous funding slide, our current 2025 project list is also heavily dependent on grant funding. City staff was able to secure 75% of our 2025 transportation capital improvement costs through a federal redistribution grant. So now we are moving into the second part of the staff report for the 2026 to 2031 TIP. Projects proposed in the TIP present work remaining from various plans. Incorporates projects from the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, the Active Transportation Plan, Transit Development Plan, Transportation Safety Action Plan, and several other major maintenance asphalt overlay projects. The adopted TIP may be amended by further resolution by council at any time during the year should changes be required or additional funding opportunities become available. Council can also add, delete, modify, or move the priority of the listed projects. So a quick summary of the projects in the TIP. Annual inspection and maintenance are critical in any transportation system to ensure safety and efficiency of the infrastructure. This includes inspection of all bridges, routine adjustments to traffic signals and their operations, and typical maintenance of our streets and sidewalks. Maintenance of our city streets is vital. The city annually completes a chip seal program which preserves between six to 10 miles of nearly, of our nearly 100 centerline miles of city streets. In addition to the annual chip seal program, we also regularly complete asphalt grind and overlay projects on our arterial and collector streets. Another street surfacing preservation method applies an asphalt slurry to seal and protect the existing street surface. Multimodal improvement projects enhance and support other transportation modes in the city. As you can tell from the previous list of projects, complete streets is far more than just the motoring public. Ellensburg is proud to also do our part in planning, promoting, building, and maintaining the many modes of transportation in our community, from active transportation for users of all ages and abilities, and local, regional transit, to commuting, freight, and emergency responders. Connectivity projects fill in gaps in the existing transportation network. The Palustacascades Reconnect Trail Project will complete the remaining three-mile reconnection of the cross-state Palustacascades Trail on the west and north sides of Ellensburg. From the PTC Trail to Bowers Road, past the airport to the Sanders Road trailhead. This project includes improved pedestrian street crossings, curb, gutter, buffer strips, and surface water improvements as needed to complete the project. The Third Avenue Paverstone Pathway and Historic Lighting Project will replace the existing sidewalk on the north side of Third Avenue with a paverstone pathway and updated historic three globe lighting from Water Street to the historic Train Depot. The project will restore this sidewalk to its previous glory in the early 1900s and improve pedestrian access to transit, the central business district, and adjacent businesses. About 432,000 in federal STBG set-aside program, which is a transportation alternatives program, funds will administer through the Quadco Regional Transportation Planning Organization were secured for this project. Moving on to intersection improvements, these aim to improve or maintain motor vehicle capacity and improve safety for those choosing active transportation modes of travel. The Mountain View Ave. and Bull Road Willow Street Intersection Enhancements Project will help maintain the city's adopted level of service for traffic with increased traffic from planned residential development south of this intersection along Bull Road. The project will also install a traffic signal with advanced video vehicle detection, protected left turn phasing, flashing yellow left turn arrows, ADA compliant pedestrian crossings, leading pedestrian crossing intervals, and bicycle detection. The University Way and Water Street Intersection Enhancements Project will also help maintain the city's adopted traffic level of service and minimize delays at the intersection. The project will widen University Way to install dedicated left turn lanes, upgraded traffic signals, protected left turn phasing, flashing yellow left turn arrows, ADA compliant pedestrian crossings, and leading pedestrian crossing intervals. The 2025 grant application that the city is working on right now will also include safety countermeasures along the University Way corridor identified in the updated Traffic Safety Action Plan, such as improved signage, street lighting, and pavement markings. Street improvement projects fill in gaps in the street network or add urban street elements to existing routes, including street widening, curb, gutter, sidewalk, ADA upgrades, channelization, buffer strips, street trees, stormwater facilities, transit improvements, street lighting, bicycle facilities, and landscaping features. Design for the Helena Avenue Improvements Project is underway. This is a multimodal street improvement project that will upgrade transportation for all users. The project will complete and construct Helena Avenue from Water Street to Cora Street and connect to the Palustacascades Trail south of Idanason-Aronica Elementary School. Design is funded by a Washington State budget allocation. Construction funding has not been obtained yet for this project, but is scheduled for 2027 if funding is secured. The Vantage Highway Shared Use Pathway Project will install curb, gutter, sidewalk, and a shared use pathway on University Way and Vantage Highway, from Alder Street to the west end of the Gateway Two Project's planned frontage improvements at Vista Road. The project will provide an active transportation connection to the Radio Hill neighborhood, the Palustacascades Trail, and the Kitata County Event Center. Nearly 1.9 million in federal surface transportation block grant funds administered through Kitata County were secured for these improvements. Design and permitting for the Gateway Two Project is currently underway. This is a multimodal street improvement project that will upgrade transportation for all users. The project will widen Vantage Highway from Vista Road to the east city limits, add a center turn lane to match improvements at Finning Road, and install curb, gutter, lighting, street trees, a sidewalk on the south side of the street, and a shared use pathway on the north side. Design is funded by a Washington State Department of Ecology grant. The city is applying for construction funds and buildout is scheduled for 2027 if funding Public transit improvements from the city's transit development plan were added to the TIP this year. These projects integrate transit elements to the transportation system like bus turnouts or improved stops with shelters, benches, bike racks, garbage cans, landscaping, and ADA upgrades. Service connection improvements and signal priority upgrades for transit buses are also included in this year's TIP. In addition, transit features are often incorporated into multimodal TIP projects. The planned 2026 TIP project list is also heavily dependent on grant funding. Staff has been able to secure over 50% of the cost for transportation capital improvements scheduled next year from federal grants. This next slide is a summary of planned expenditures on approved TIP projects from the city's Traffic Impact Fee Fund, or TIFF, for the next seven years. The city approved the TIFF ordinance on March 15, 2009. All persons receiving building permits for new development within the city of Ellensburg, but outside of the central commercial district, are required to pay traffic impact fees in an amount and manner set forth in the TIFF chapter. Collected TIFF funds can only be used for public facility improvements that will reasonably benefit new development. This concludes the staff's annual complete streets update and six-year transportation improvement plan report. Thank you.
Okay, um, the floor is now open to testimony from the public. Um, if, does anybody in the audience wish to comment on this issue?
Questions?
We'll try it.
I'll try it. So I saw somewhere in there that there's, I'm really bad at this, $433,000 that we're gonna match in funds to a grant they got to make the really wide, pretty pavers to go from, like, Main Street down to the Train Depot, right? Um, have a hard time with that. Once again, I mean, I, I feel like you guys know what my number where my heart really stands is with our city pool, and I think that maybe we should redirect some money. Um, I mean, if you look at the pavers on University Way, I think it's University, the ones headed west, you know, that pretty road, I mean, sidewalk headed to the west going nowhere except for an industrial area. I might not know the Big Future Pretty plans for this town, but we didn't even put trees on that. So it was just like this really nice wide sidewalk. So I, I guess I'm concerned that our allocation of funds are, um, needs to be revisited, and that one has been, and we are matching the 433. So I guess I'm curious as to the other ones that I saw that we're gonna try and make it pretty going up over, where am I?
Vantage.
That way. Yeah. The, so to Vantage, I mean, I think that is probably money more well spent because it's going not to an industrial area, but it's going into an area that we hang out and where people go, and it's got the fairgrounds and all that. I mean, to that, to me, is a more used section of land versus the pavers that already got put in and out on University Way and the ones that you're talking about, $433,000 in matching funds. I don't know, I just think, maybe allocate funds different.
Adrienne, right?
You do have one online, Ms. Monahan.
Okay, I'm gonna take the online one.
Hi, this is Victoria Thomas, uh, resident of Ellensburg. I live in the neighborhood of the Willow Street, Bull Road, Mountain View, and I just would like to request a roundabout rather than a traffic light there. I think there's a lot of traffic already there and putting a light in, or at I think significantly slow and hinder traffic, uh, and also create more opportunities for accidents. I believe that roundabouts actually contribute to fewer accidents, um, and keep traffic flowing. So with the, um, houses proposed, or going in at the end of Bull Road, the houses across Kitata Highway there that will eventually go in, um, and then, yeah, there's a few other, uh, housing developments and just a lot more traffic going between Ellensburg and Kitata. I'd really like to request that we think about a roundabout there instead of a traffic light. Um, yeah, I, I'm glad we're doing something to manage that, um, because the traffic is getting really heavy there, um, but I, I really think a light will be, um, something that is gonna be, uh, a thing that the community will be quite upset about. Again, only speaking for myself on this, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience?
My name is Susan Waddell, I live in the city of Ellensburg, and I'm speaking for myself, and I'm, I'm responding to, um, the idea, I live also near Mountain View Avenue and Mountain View Park, and, um, I have walked many times across Mountain View. Um, there are a lot of elders who live on the south side of Mountain View Avenue and may not be encouraged to go out, but they are especially discouraged because the count to cross that street is 10, and never was I able to get across with my mother in a wheelchair before, we were at zero. Never, ever, ever was I able to do that. My concern about a roundabout at that intersection at Willow and, um, one corner is dusty, so there are four, a pasture and a residential and residential, it's a residential area, and when the city is, and the transportation department is considering those intersections and possible roundabouts, I would also like you to take into consideration those who are not using cars but are actually using their feet and are pedestrians. Thank you.
Apparently I have lots of neighbors. Anybody else in the audience? Okay. Does staff have anything to add? Anything to respond to?
There's, there's one more online.
Uh, go ahead, Ms. Monahan.
Hi, thank you, my name is Mary Monahan, I'm the city of, I mean, I'm a resident of the city of Ellensburg, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, and I want to, um, reiterate again that there are many people who use modes of transportation that don't have wheels, and I would appreciate consideration of those who walk. I do appreciate the sidewalks that are being built to allow more accessibility for people like me who commute by foot. I also would have a problem with a traffic circle, they are much more hard, much more difficult for pedestrians to cross on foot than a signal light that, um, actually controls traffic. I mean, I've walked my dog this afternoon and was called a nasty name while I was in the crosswalk because a driver had to stop. So, um, more consideration for us in your traffic improvement plans would be entirely welcomed by somebody like me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, uh, so again, staff, does anybody need to add? Uh, so council, this is an opportunity for you to ask questions of staff and the public, no comments.
Okay. Uh, question.
To? Staff?
To staff.
Okay.
Um, you considered a roundabout at Bull and Mountain View, did you not?
Yes, we are the consultant, and they did look at both options there, yes. And one major concern there is right-of-way inadequate space for a functional roundabout, trying to, how big should the roundabout be? And if you have truck traffic, it makes a roundabout less functional. So that, that is one concern that they had, and we could get more information on that as well, as the results of their analysis, if you'd like to see that.
Um, no, I just wanted to, uh, make sure Victoria knew that.
Yes.
That was considered.
Yes.
And, um, uh, to Mary and Susan's pleasure, it was rejected, apparently. So, um, also, so you mentioned the PTC three-mile reconnection, is that funded?
No.
Okay.
No, that's a, a future project that, um, we wanted to highlight. It came out of our, uh, Traffic Safety Action Plan, it was one of the highlighted projects in there as a way to, uh, give alternative routes to, uh, you'll see a little bit more in our, our next presentation, but, uh, just looking for, in the complete streets network, trying to finish that route and, and have pedestrians and active transportation users separated from traffic to improve safety.
Okay, thank you.
David?
Quick question, uh, thanks for the presentation, Josh. Uh, transit, the transit column, I assume, and looking at the top of the, of the, uh, formula, it looks like it's a roll-up of the sales tax revenue that's projected going forward. Um, and if I understood you correctly, the, the breakouts for the individual projects, um, under the, in the transit column captures the transit portion of a larger project, is that fair to say?
Correct, right.
And I, I guess I just wanted to make sure I understood that. So I'm looking like, for example, at the Third Avenue Paver Project.
Yes.
So about, well, it's listed as a, what was it? Listed as about an $865,000 project.
Correct.
And half is coming out of transit?
Yes.
Could you explain, I, I have a hard time kind of picturing that, so explain that to me, why transit, why that improvement falls in, so squarely in the transit column?
So, uh, that was a staff decision that transit makes capital improvements that support transit stops within a quarter mile and, of each stop, and so there will be an improved stop at the new depot, just west.
Okay, I know about that.
West of Weenass.
Okay, so that, that's the connection.
Connection, correct.
That's, that's all I needed to hear, thank you.
Four questions and a comment. First, uh, thank you, Josh.
Questions only.
Questions only, okay, questions only. Uh, for the, for the sake of the, the public here, Josh, can you talk about what goes into the prioritization of these projects? Because there's about 65 on the list, so is it citizen comments, staff recommendations, what goes into that?
Sure, it's, uh, fundability, it's, it's all those things, um, public comment and previous plans, so this has been a, a document that's been living for quite so this has been a document that's been living for quite some time, and so as projects are finished, you know, in the first one or two years, then those older projects get gradually moved up. You can't just pick one project and say, oh, that's gonna be done in six years, you know, it's so, some have been holding on longer than others, but as funding opportunities come up, that's a big consideration as well as, and if we receive a petition, we've had several projects come and rise higher because they were shown to be a public priority. The Third Avenue Paverstone Project was a council project, I think I got added in 2014, so that one, we've been trying to find a way to fund that for quite some time.
Gotcha. Second question then, um, comparing your 25, your 2025 funding versus your 2026 funding, 2025 outstanding job, we're getting 75% or roughly $3 million from grants, it sounds like for 2026, you're at about 50%, around $2 million for grants. Do you still have the opportunity to get more grant funding in 2026 to hopefully get up to that 75% marker or larger?
We are actively pursuing grants in the next two or three months, this is really our grant season right now through the summer, and it depends on, on the grant that we're looking for, so, yes, but a lot of those funds are usually your design phase, so we'll be doing more design work if we're successful in 2026, and then subsequently have a very high construction outlay of money in 2027.
Okay. And then my last question is, could you talk about what goes into the decision as far as a recommendation for a roundabout versus an intersection, and then also the time associated with crossing those intersections of roundabout?
So can you repeat the second question?
Well, let's start with the first part, just the decision between roundabout and intersection, what drives that?
Sure, I mean, right off the top is cost, a roundabout's gonna cost about three times as much as a signal, and a lot of that is tied to traffic control because you're having to really push traffic around to build a brand-new circle right in the middle of the intersection where everyone wants to drive, um, so, uh, traffic control is a huge impact, so cost is much higher for roundabouts. Roundabouts obviously have less maintenance long-term, so there's that lifecycle analysis that you have to go through as well, so a signal requires regular maintenance, whereas a roundabout more or less requires much less maintenance, there's no electronics, less things to go wrong, less parts and pieces to deal with, less, uh, a signal is much easier to install, much easier to control as well. Roundabouts don't work in every situation, really you want to have balanced flow into the intersection, if you have one leg of the intersection that's heavy, then that leg of the intersection, but, so, we could use Mountain View, Mountain View and Bull as an example as well. Since there is so much traffic on Mountain View and Bull, there would be steady flow going east-west, and it would be very hard for the north and southbound traffic to find gaps, and so that, that creates trouble for a roundabout if, if you're trying to make a selection, that's, so that's another consideration. Another one you, you mentioned as well is pedestrian use. It, roundabouts have been used safely for pedestrians, but you do have to really accommodate those users, you can't control traffic as well as you can with a signal, you have a lot more control over when the pedestrians can cross, bicycle traffic is the same way. They found bicycles really can flow in and out of a roundabout well because people slow down to 15 miles an hour, it's a little bit more manageable for bicycles coming in, and you can put bicycles either on the sidewalk, make a really wide sidewalk at the roundabout. So, it's, it's really a balancing act, it's definitely not a one-size-fits-all, and so each, the city is, the Public Works Department is using consultants to analyze each location to see what would be the best application, and we are looking at roundabouts in a couple different intersection locations right now with our consultants that we think would be good fits, so roundabouts are definitely in our, our, uh, in our view, and we are considering them.
Can you add safety?
Yes. So, um, from a safety perspective, they've seen a lot of reduction in accidents within a roundabouts, I get, my favorite example is at the Union Gap exit off in Yakima, where they had a significant reduction in accidents there and a significant, significant reduction in, um, in congestion as well, and so that was a great example of two roundabouts back-to-back working, you know, in a great location like that. So, um, yes, there's that element of slowing down, and so when there are accidents, instead of it being a T-bone, it's a glancing blow, and so the accidents are less severe and tend to be less frequent in, in a roundabout.
Last question that kind of broke, got broken up.
Yeah.
As far as the crosswalk signalization, do we have the opportunity to increase it based upon the demographics of the neighborhood, so elderly population, more time?
Absolutely, and, and, you know, we, we do take comments and questions from people and go out and check and make sure they're operating at the, at the right time, so, I will check that. You bet.
Further questions? No more questions. Okay, the public testimony portion of this hearing is now closed, council may begin its discussion and deliberation and comments.
Oh, now?
After we make a motion.
Rich is here just to keep me in line, that's it. This is, this is more of a comment that came up regarding grant funding. When it comes to the prioritization of these projects, these 65 projects are out here, this is exactly as Josh described, you're hoping to get funding for some of these projects, but inevitably, we end up kicking the can down the road, and when people are like, when are we gonna take care of this, when do we get to take care of this, this is a prime example of, the city has it on its plan, it's a matter of when do we get the funding to be able to do it. Now, whenever we have grant funding that comes up for these projects, and Josh, you can make a comment on this, I would love to get your feedback on it, but if free money's on the line, we're gonna take advantage of it. I am really bad at this. All right, well, I'll say it, anyway, if there's free money on the line, there's a benefit for us doing a match to be able to take advantage of that free money, because if we don't, it's twice the cost, and so that might be part of the prioritization of it. Now, it's not to negate one project over and over, but it is a deciding factor associated with why we may go for something, if we have a grant associated with one of those particular projects.
So I'll make the motion.
There you go.
I'll move to adopt a proposed resolution 2025-12, approving the TIP for the 2026 to 31, uh, and authorize staff to submit listed projects for funding as grant opportunities become available.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve resolution 2025-12, which approves the six-year transportation improvement plan and authorizes the necessary changes. Is there any discussion? I will just make one comment, this is really small, too. People are getting old. Okay.
Could I, could I just make one brief comment? This model, this, wherever it went, this model, Transportation Improvement Plan model, at our last meeting, I believe it was our last meeting, we approved a project to develop a similar model for our park system, a capital program methodology of defining needs and identifying funding sources. So the comment earlier about the deterioration of the swimming pool does not go unheeded, we're obviously aware of that, it's not quite something that staff can go out and write a check for, but I would just want to make the point that that, this is the, the sort of, the systematic way of sort of weighing those priorities, and then as was stated earlier, it's like, um, there's a long, there's always, in my business, there's always more project need than there is money, and it's just a priority list and trying to go after the funding and keep working the list. The list will never be empty. When you build something, eventually it's gonna wear out and you have to replace it, so, I just wanted to mention that. So it's the, this is the method of doing business, I just wanted to make that point, and it's becoming, it's well-established in the TIP, but it's going to become an integral part of our park planning and operations, I feel, going forward, so I just wanted to mention that.
Any further comments? Hearing none, all of the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, two will vote aye opposed, that motion passes. Move to item 9A, page 103, this is second reading and potential adoption of ordinance 4963, which is a rezone of parcel 954442, and there will be an opportunity for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members. Chase Peterson, Associate Planner with Community Development Department, here tonight to again present for project file number P25-017, a site-specific rezone for TAJ LLC. The applicant has proposed a rezone for parcel 954442, site address 902 North Enterprise Way, from light industrial to regional center mixed-use. The current comprehensive plan, future land use designation of the subject parcel is community mixed-use, so the, the proposed regional center mixed-use zoning is a compatible zoning designation according to that future land use plan. Staff held an open record hearing in front of the hearing examiner on May 13th, 2025, and received the hearing examiner's recommendation of approval on May 16th, 2025. First reading of ordinance 4963 occurred at a closed record hearing before council on June 2nd, 2025, at which time council voted to approve the rezone as presented and conducted the first reading of ordinance, of the ordinance. Staff now recommends council move to conduct second reading, uh, second reading of ordinance 4963, approving the rezone of parcel number 954442, from light industrial to regional center mixed-use. Thank you.
Hold up. Questions of staff, only. Anybody in the audience wish to make a comment? Anybody online? There is somebody online? Nope, nobody online. Okay, council.
I'll move.
Mr. Mayor, I move to conduct second reading of ordinance 4963, approving rezone of parcel number 954442, from light industrial IL to regional center mixed-use, RCMU.
You want adoption as well? You intended adoption?
An adoption, yes.
Okay. We have a motion second to conduct second reading and adoption of ordinance 4963, which regards the zoning for parcel 95442. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Bochon?
Yes.
Goodlow?
Yes.
Loquist?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Palmer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Elliott?
Yes.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ellensburg, Washington relating to zoning and amending Title 15 of the Ellensburg City Code by changing the zoning classification of certain property within the city of Ellensburg from light industrial IL to regional center mixed-use, RCMU.
Item 9B, page 115, this is a potential first reading of ordinance 4964, which are traffic code revisions, there will be an opportunity for public comment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, Josh Mattson, Assistant City Engineer in Public Works Department. Before you tonight is the first reading of an ordinance with proposed revisions to Title 8, the traffic section of the Ellensburg City Code. The proposed ordinance reflects parking revision requests from staff to remove the northwest corner of Pearl Street and Fourth Avenue from the municipal parking lot section with the recent completion for construction of Unity Park at that same location. The proposed ordinance also reflects the following traffic revision requests from staff for speed limit revisions. First, reduce the speed limit on Bull Road south of Mountain View Avenue from 35 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour due to the significant increase in residential development on the street and lack of outlet south of Umtanum Road. Second, reduce the speed limit on Umtanum Road from just west of I-90 to the west city limits, from 50 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour. Staff supports this speed reduction to match Kitas County's similar approved speed reduction on Umtanum Road west of city limits. Also, add to the traffic code the existing Umtanum Road speed limit from a point about 520 feet west of Lake Shore Way to the west side of I-90 as 35 miles per hour. Staff recommends that council consider first reading of the proposed ordinance revising portions of the traffic code.
Council, questions of staff?
Sorry, Josh, can you repeat that Umtanum one one more time? I thought I heard you say decrease, but I thought I heard an increase, could you repeat it?
So there's two parts, the first part is from I-90 west to the city limits, which was marked as 50 miles an hour, we're reducing that to 35.
Understood, thank you. That was part of it.
Any other questions of staff? Comments from the audience? Comments online?
Wait.
You almost pulled a hammy. Uh, yes, it can be a question. Go ahead, Ms. Keller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I submitted some comments to the council in written form. Additionally, I recommend that the city replace the current downtown parking signage in the historic downtown area with a single clear sign stating three-hour parking, no parking 4:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. Currently, there is little compliance with existing signage, which results in inefficient cleaning and maintenance of the historic downtown area. The city maintains eight off-street parking lots, seven lots providing 140 spaces available nightly for overnight parking. These lots are located within two blocks of the historic downtown, offering convenient alternatives for overnight vehicle parking. If you add the eighth lot, which happens to be the parking lot outside this building, City Hall, you would increase the spaces by 54 additional spaces. Enforcing a no-parking window between 4:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. would allow the city's street cleaning equipment, including the street Zembosi, to thoroughly and efficiently clean the streets as required. This measure will also significantly improve snow removal operations during the winter months. This proposed recommendation is no cost to the city budget, and will enhance both quality and speed of street cleaning and snow removal services in the historic downtown area benefiting residents, businesses, and visitors alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Adriya? You have to stand at the microphone.
I'm trying to get grasp on the map here. So the Umtanum from 50 to 35 seems like a really big jump.
It's a reduction.
It's a reduction, right, yeah, a really big jump, that's a really big difference, that's a, that's a huge gap to go from 35 to 50, and I guess I'm wondering, is it because we've added more, um, add driveways or more people coming and going on that section? And I'm just not aware of that, because normally, isn't that why we reduce speed limit, is because there's more people who are actively on the road, or maybe our road is degraded? I'm not sure, why would we go from a 50 to a 35?
You can answer that. So, so the county already changed their speed limit at the Yakima River going past, and so it would be really clunky to go 50 to 35, so that, that's really, that's what spurred the change.
Any other comments? Okay, council.
Mr. Mayor, I move first reading of ordinance 49764.
Second.
Which is our traffic ordinance.
We have a motion second to conduct first reading of ordinance 4964, which are traffic code revisions. Is there any discussion?
Um, I'm, I think we can take Mr. Keller's suggestion under advisement, I don't think we can include it in this ordinance, but I think that there will be a cost to the city in replacing all those signs. I don't know what that cost would be, but, um, it, it may, it may be worth talking about, so.
I was gonna add, if I could add on to that, I, it occurred to me, same thing, but also, it may be an opportunity for us to do at least a temporary increase in enforcement, and it is an issue on overnight parking down there, so, I know we don't have a lot of resources for parking enforcement after hours, but, you know, I agree, we have to, I mean, it would be worthwhile to take a look at it.
40 to 6:00 a.m.
Overnight, it's gonna be basically anytime after 10 o'clock at night, but...
There's no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, two will vote aye opposed. I too will vote aye opposed. That motion passes and leading into item 11B.
I'll read the ordinance now.
What's that?
I'll read the ordinance now.
Yes, you will.
Okay.
I screwed that up, that's a long time since I've done one.
That's impressive. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Ellensburg, Washington relating to Title 8, traffic and amending sections 82840 and 84220 of the Ellensburg City Code.
Should have taken my break. We're gonna be back at 9 o'clock, we're gonna take a break, because I think 11B is gonna be long.
I already took my break, sorry.
All right.
I would be interested in checking the FBI stuff that you were talking about if you have time.
With city staff, I'll go through a few of the key elements from the planning process, and then I'll hand it back over to Josh to talk about next steps. For the project summary, as Josh mentioned, the city received a grant award through the federal Safe Streets and Roads for All program to develop a transportation safety action plan for the city and surrounding urban growth area. The TSAP is a comprehensive safety action plan that aims at reducing and ultimately eliminating serious injury and fatal crashes for all modes of transportation. The key elements of the plan are safety analysis, community engagement, project prioritization, and leadership commitment and goal setting, and we'll talk about each of these in more detail. And as for the timeline of the project, we began working on it in last August. We presented a community engagement plan to council, which they approved in September. We spent the next few months developing the plan itself, and then last month, we submitted a final draft of the completed plan to the city. For the safety analysis, we reviewed historical crash statistics to evaluate when, where, and why a crash occurred. We used the data that the Washington State Department of Transportation collects, and we looked at a five-year period from 2019 to 2023. The analysis included all public roads within the city's urban growth area, but excludes crashes on I-90. In the five-year period, there were a total of 1,175 crashes reported, and the map on this slide shows where all of the reported crashes occurred. The most severe crashes are categorized as KSIs, which stands for killed or seriously injured. During the five-year study period, 11 KSI crashes were reported. Ten of those were serious injury crashes, and there was one fatal crash. After we analyzed the crash history, the next step was to review the city's transportation network as a whole and identify other locations that have a similar context to where the highest number and most severe crashes occurred. This approach identifies risk factors that are specific to Ellensburg and associated with the most common crash types. We use these to identify where crashes may be more likely to occur, whether or not there is a history of crashes at that location. So this assessment allows for opportunities to reduce the risk of KSI crashes before they occur. Some examples of the risk factors that we found during the analysis were commercially zoned areas, arterial roadways, and large intersections. And through the crash history and risk assessment process, our team identified five priority corridors that would have the greatest benefit from safety improvements. And those five are listed there on the screen: University Way, Fifth Avenue, Water Street, Main Street, and South Canyon Road. The next key element of the TSAP was community engagement. We approached this in two ways: first, through the involvement of what we call the task force and trusted advocate groups, and also a broader community engagement effort. In total, the task force met five times between October of 2024 and April of '25. And their role was to review the findings of the safety analysis, provide input on community engagement materials and activities, and review the outcomes of the planning process. The trusted advocates group served as a liaison between the project team and specific groups within the community. Our team conducted a survey online, and also, a lot of the trusted advocate groups or a lot of the trusted advocates hosted in-person focus groups to reach additional people. The survey questions included ranking those first five priority corridors we identified through the analysis, ranking them from least safe to most, most safe, and then also provided space for people taking the survey to identify other areas in Ellensburg where they feel less safe. So in total, there were 476 responses to the survey, and we were also able to pull out some key themes, including the identification of four additional corridors to include in the list of safety improvements. Once we had received the feedback from the community on the safety analysis and the other priority locations, we applied ranking criteria, and those criteria were based on crash history, risk factors, community input, and others to form a prioritized list of corridor projects. One of the central objectives of the TSAP is to develop a list of projects such as signal improvements or other capital improvement-type projects, and also programs. A community like a public safety campaign could be a type of program that addressed the, that addressed the priority safety concerns. Doing this process helps the city focus their resources and align with the prerequisites of the federal and state funding programs that the city may pursue. And with that, Josh, can I hand it back over to you?
Thank you, Krista. So the last key element for an action plan is leadership commitment and goal setting. For goal setting, staff is recommending that council adopt the recommended Vision Zero fatality and serious injury commitment, shown here on the slide. And if you can't read that, it says the city of Ellensburg is committed to a 50% reduction in roadway fatalities and serious injuries by 2035, with the eventual goal of zero roadway fatalities and serious injuries. An eligible action plan must be in place before an agency can apply for SS4A funds to implement projects and strategies, and an adopted Vision Zero statement, like the one I just read, is required for an action plan to be eligible. Part of the leadership commitment that the city is making is that the city staff will conduct an annual review and publicly report a summary of the previous year's crash history and describe how safety was incorporated into planned transportation projects, such as those on the six-year tip and in the projects that have been completed. Finally, the safety action plan will be considered for an update every five years or as needed when determined by staff. The city plans to submit an application to the SS4A Implementation Grant Program for safety improvements on the University Way corridor. As city staff make progress towards implementation, some projects or recommendations may be revised or refined as needed based on the MUTCD, which is our signage standards, and other relevant industry standards. Other corridors identified in the plan may be candidates for funding through other grant This completes our presentation for the transportation safety action plan. Questions of staff? Because I have something to. Go ahead.
I don't want to get too far into the weeds, Josh. Thanks for the presentation and also the online presentation. I was just curious, on the Water Street corridor project, is that, is any of the work that's envisioned in that incorporated into our current Water Street project, or is that a, a future reconfiguration?
So, elements of the project happening right now, yes. And then, we'd have to go with the list, Krista. Do you have the list of?
No, I, I don't necessarily need a lot in detail. I was just curious if we're, if that's a future project or if some of it's being incorporated into our current rebuild.
Would you like to take a stab at that, Krista? I have one idea, and maybe, maybe I'll kick off, and Krista, if you want to add on. So I would say, yes, for sure, we're, we're doing ADA curb ramp improvements, which is a safety improvement. Also, we are doing improved vehicle detection at each intersection, and that, so that helps us better control vehicle movements and resulting in better pedestrian and non-motor safety.
I was curious, maybe Krista can weigh in on this, or Josh. One of the weird design features on that, on the section of water that I've observed over the years is the, the situation where we've got parallel parking on the outside, and you've got a bike lane inside, and then you've got travel lanes. So if somebody opens their door as a bike goes by, it's, you know. So recognition, there's, other than building separation, which I don't think is part of the mix, is there some better recognition of the bike lane?
Yeah, we are adjusting lane widths with the project, so we are narrowing the, the vehicle lanes as much as possible, down to about 11 feet, and that really makes vehicles slow down and opens up space for, for the bike lanes, not as much as we'd like, but like you said, we, we can't afford to reconstruct the whole road.
Right, and is that particular improvement part of 2025's project?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Great, good to hear. Thanks.
It's wonderful to hear this, this grant plan or goal to have zero accidents by, was it, 2035?
Yeah, a 50% reduction.
50% reduction, and then zero fatalities by a certain date.
Sometime.
Just out of realm of reality, is there another city that, that has adopted this, that has been successful with the zero fatalities? I just, my concern is, how feasible is it, honestly? I would, I would, I'd be happy for it, but, yeah.
You want to take that one, Josh, or you want me to?
Sure, you have more experience, I think, with, with other agencies. That'd be great, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, the, the Vision Zero statement that staff is recommending that council adopts is similar to Vision Zero statements that other cities have adopted recently. There is, this is coming from, partly from the state level and a, a reinvigorated focus on safety. There is a state, a Vision Zero plan at the state level as well, and so WashDOT has their own plan, and the, the goal is to work towards zero serious and fatal crashes.
So, to, to, a follow-up question on that is, that's great. Again, I kind of question the viability of it. As long as cell phones exist, that's my biggest concern, to be quite honest, distracted drivers. But is there a potential where we would not be eligible for grants if we cross a certain fatality threshold during that time of trying to get down to 50% of fatalities currently?
I don't think there are currently a constraint on funding at that level.
So there's no punitive damage, but if we adopt it, it opens us up to the funding?
Correct.
Yeah, the, oh.
You can answer.
Okay. Yeah, the good news is our, our accidents are relatively low compared to similarly-sized agencies as, and jurisdictions, so, yeah, trying to reduce, it's only five, you know, that's one accident, or half an accident a year, one accident every two years for the next 10 years, in, in reduction.
One fatality?
Yeah, we'll talk to that in a second, so.
So, but that's related to my question. So, so why was the study period five years, given there is only 11, and the statistical significance of those 11 just doesn't seem very big?
Yeah, I would tag on to that, and I'm, I'm, the intersections where I've seen serious accidents, and these are all car pedestrian, they are not car versus car, and I'm struggling to remember any fatalities in the last 15 years in the city of Ellensburg other than car pedestrians, and most of those were adjacent to the city. I'm not questioning the statistics, but I think holistically, if we're going to try and do something that's real, the love and serious injuries, too, I think is, you know, there may be an ortho injury in there or something like that, but we're not moving people out of here for definitive care secondary to motor vehicle accidents inside the city. Maybe car pedestrians, skateboarding accidents, motorcycle accidents that are non-road accidents, those, those I can, I can do, but I, I'm just, I'm wondering, I don't want to overcomplicate this, this is a good program, this is a good goal, and to your statement, the US airline industry had a Project Zero, and it made a massive safety impact in moving towards that for zero fatalities. I mean, it's not perfect, but it, I mean, it made a 90% reduction, and it was target zero, so.
And, and this has been around for quite a while, and other states have adopted it and had significant improvements.
But I, I guess what I'm asking is, is there a way for us, we're talking about relatively low numbers, I know exactly where you can get the numbers, can we do 20 years and, and look at this a little bit differently? Because I looked at the map, those aren't the most dangerous intersections from an EMS standpoint, I'm just flat-out telling you, they're not. They're, they're the ones that hit, you know, hit certain criteria, and it may even depend on how the medic wrote the report, but I, I, I think that there are probably better roads or intersections for us, so if there's a way to broaden it and just take that second look at it, I would ask that we do that. I don't want to screw up the whole project.
Krista, can you comment on the five-year period?
Yes. The five-year period is a kind of a standard transportation study period that we look at, so that you're supposed to, for the purposes of specifically the SS4A, you're supposed to use the most recent five years of reported crashes that's available. So we started in 2024, the most recent data that was available was the 2019 to 2023, so that's how we got the five years.
So, so just to, are we talking car pedestrians, too, or are these only vehicle versus vehicle?
Yes, it's cars and pedestrians, it's all modes transportation.
Okay. Yeah, your full road intersection's on the list at Mountain View, 100%. There's the two fatalities right down there.
Josh, did you want to respond to the other part?
And what was, what was remaining for your?
Full and Mountain View is on your list. It's not on the, it's not on the map.
What years, do you know? So we could go and, and try to find it if something was missed?
I'll, I'll help you with the stats.
Okay, okay.
No, I'm talking if you go outside of five years, that intersection ends up on your list.
Gotcha. Yeah, and the, the previous plans that we've done internally were led by Washington State Transportation Commission, they said five years, that's, so, yeah.
Well, maybe the light, I mean, we're going to fix that with a light, so.
We'll make it through to the roundabout.
No, not an option.
Okay, thank you. Anybody in the audience wish to speak? Anybody online? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, move to...
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, correction, there is one online.
I apologize, I know it's late. Victoria Thomas, city resident, speaking for myself. I just want to say thanks to the city for allowing people to make these comments. The online survey was great, I took that, I was part of it, and I was able to identify some other places that, of concern that I have. I have a family member who drives the city bus, and so they're on the road a lot and see a lot of places that might be, you know, opportunities for us to look at. And I would just mention, we don't know about all the accidents that don't happen. I can talk about so many, I won't, but I can think of so many times where somebody has just jumped out in front of me, or I just saw one yesterday, actually, where someone jumped out in front of someone else, and so it was an accident that didn't happen, so it's tough to have data on that. So I appreciate us working towards a zero goal, and we definitely have some spaces where we can improve safety with pedestrians, with bikes, with cars, and so I appreciate that. And I, I remember one of the fatalities that happened at Full and Mountain View, I was alive for that as well. So I just appreciate you guys taking our comments, and thanks.
Okay, thank you. Counsel?
So, you're going to confer with Josh Hudson data, or some different intersections?
The action in front of us is to accept the transportation safety action plan. We could reject it and provide additional data, but I don't, I think that screws things up really bad.
Okay. I was just wondering if that need to be part of the motion?
You can, you can put that in.
I think the compliance with DOT standards is kind of critical, though, in terms of the funding sources.
Yeah.
Their, their standardization across jurisdictions.
I, I think the information is nice to know, but this plan, it, it can just be supplemental.
We still need a motion.
Okay. Well, I will move that counsel accept the City of Ellensburg Transportation Safety Action Plan and adopt the recommended Vision Zero fatality and serious injury commitment.
Second?
Motion second to accept the transportation safety action plan and Vision Zero fatality and serious injury commitment. Discussion.
Go ahead, sir.
I wanted to say that this is what DEI looks like to me. This is, this is intentional, seeking input from low-income people with disabilities, the youth and seniors and non-English-speaking people in our community, to make sure that the built environment works for them. And how we build our public spaces is, is what is, getting those voices into that process is important. And I don't think most of these, I mean, maybe, maybe the online survey, we would have captured some folks, but, but the consultants had their, the stakeholder groups that were identified that, that really intentionally brought those voices in, and, and so I appreciate that effort. That's all.
Go ahead. I'm good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye to, but aye opposed. That motion passes. Item 11B, page 257, this is council rules discussion. Again, there will be an opportunity for, did I miss public, I know, I asked for public comment. Council rules discussion, there will be an opportunity for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor Heidi Baron-Sternaway, city manager and counsel. Tonight before you is a request, requested discussion item. At a previous meeting, council had discussed the possibility of revisiting your council rules, and staff are requesting direction on proposed changes to council rules, and this is the opportunity to host that discussion. So if there is an interest in changing your council rules, and again, you've had these rules in place for a number of years, the last time they were adopted was May of 2024, so this is an opportunity to provide, provide some direction to staff, so we can come back to you if, if there are edits to council rules with language to consider.
So I guess I would also just highlight that May 2024, primarily, we dealt with public comment, and the iteration immediately preceding that in the preceding 18 months to that is, I'm drawing a blank as to what we specifically amended. Oh, it was the proclamation thing. The, the proclamation's landed in the mayor's lap, thank you, everybody. So those are the last two substantive changes we made. So, I know we all read these, and we have notes that says exactly what we want to change, because this was really important to all of us.
So, I've got one for 4.8, which is a citizen comment on non-agenda issues. So if you're going to your guide, there's not much on this, but I think this is one that came up when we were talking about ensuring that everybody, especially, specifically anybody that needs a translator associated with making comments. So, there's not currently anything on there, so I would say, I would like to see a recommendation that as part of the citizen, as part of the city council disclosure to invite people to speak on non-agenda items, that as we go through the rules associated with comments, what, what is it, two minutes, three minutes? Three minutes currently, that we add in a statement that for those that are needing bilingual support or the need of a translator, that on their request, we can turn that to six.
Somebody activated a mic. Not me. Go ahead.
That we could turn that to six minutes to allow three minutes for the translator and three minutes for the speaker.
And then I would just refer to section, I believe it's 7.2, subsection B, I believe, there's some additional language in that section for non-agenda items, so that may be a better location, but.
Page 275.
Thank you very much.
So the only, I guess, suggestion I would have, Delano, is let's, let's find out what the, what the recommended, I mean, doubling makes sense on its face.
Sure.
And I guess I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would not limit that to simply people who need bilingual support. I think that there, there have been people here who have a hard time speaking, and so I think that we may need to accommodate that. And I, and that's more of an ADA accommodation, but I, I think we should probably just cover it in our council rules.
Okay, I, I concur.
But I, I mean, I can just say that, that would be some suggestion to bring back to us, if something.
A recommendation on that.
Flexibility or something like that, when somebody's having a hard time speaking.
Yeah.
Because that's been an issue.
Sure.
Just to add, we're talking about non-agenda, I'd like to see anybody that needs the additional support, regardless of where we are in a meeting, whether it's non-agenda or commenting on an item, if somebody needs a translator, they should have a translator, or at least access to one.
That, I think that's in our rules, and they, and they just have to let us know ahead of time, that's always been in our rules, right?
Yeah, I don't think it's listed in our rules. It's always been an option, and so.
Can we make that clear?
We actually have it on the front of the packet right now for people who need a translation services.
But we don't have it, we don't have it specifically listed in the rules. So just, I guess, making sure that's very clear in the rules would be my ask.
And I guess, are we, just, the most effective, timely way to provide these services is through language line. Physically having a, an interpreter here or having somebody online can be fairly expensive and logistically difficult. So are, are we, is the expectation that we provide language level, language line level support or an online version of that, or is it that we actually physically have an interpreter here? Because you can understand how.
Yeah.
That would be.
Totally agree with you. We, we don't need somebody sitting there not being used meeting after meeting on the taxpayer dime.
And there's like 190 languages.
Yeah, yeah, we, we don't need a Klingon interpreter here.
So they provide those, I'm, I'm just saying, I think that level of support is what we do through 911, it's what we do for healthcare.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, so I'd say either that, or if they bring their own, like in the case of his factures, bring an interpreter, you have an interpreter.
Just let us know that's what you're doing.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So those are two suggestions.
I am, I am fine with 30 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for comments on non-agended items, and I think that we've, we've gone toward to the, any extra time at the end of the meeting. I don't know that that needs to be in the rules, but I think that's a good custom.
I agree.
I, I guess I'm a little bit sensitized to this, because we don't, oftentimes, the meeting covers things that potentially spur people's thoughts, and so I think that there's an efficiency to doing it at the end of the meeting. We docket items, and we have expectations for speakers, and granted, we're talking about a variability of a half an hour either way, so I, I can live with it, but to me, there's an agenda, we follow the agenda, and then at the end of the agenda, if people want to speak to things, there's an opportunity for people to speak. It also encourages people to stay at the end of the meeting, because we're at 10% of what we were before.
Yeah.
So, I'm just, we'll, we'll get to you. So, I'm not dying on the sword here, I'll support the other option, but, you know, there are, in case, in some cases, 40, 50, 60 people lined up to speak about things that are on the agenda, that are waiting for us to clear things that weren't on the agenda. So I'm just thinking that's something to, something to think about.
We could reduce the time, the, I guess the, the value of having it in the front is for people who, who just have a quick, I want to bring this to your attention, and then leave, and, and to make them sit through three hours seems like a burden, but that's not how it's being practiced right now, that, that, that's not how the, the comment period's being used. But I, I think that might be an anomaly. I don't know that this is going to go on forever in using a citizen comment in this manner.
And, and again, I'm not advocating this, but I'm pointing out that many of the other local governing, junior taxing districts, school boards, hospital districts, they don't necessarily provide a non-comment component to it, and in the county's case.
It's one minute.
One minute.
Yeah.
So, I, I think the impression is, is that, you know, we're overly limiting public comment, when the reality is, is that comparatively, our process is, is actually fairly wide open. So, again, I can live with what you said. Mr. Coleman, did you have a comment to make? You have, you have to come to the microphone. Yeah, yeah, you have to come to the public. Yeah, I, I said there's public comment on this one, on the agenda.
William Coleman, resident of Kidda Task. I think having a rebuttal period for public comment at the end of the meeting is a good idea, but we saw tonight, Teresa had showed up, and she had her hand up that she wanted to speak, but didn't fall within the first 30 minutes of allowable, and you went on with the meeting. She couldn't stay in to 10 o'clock to go to public comment, so she lost her ability to do that tonight. I would like to see you just allow the people in the room to speak and still allow follow-up afterward. I'm. Shouldn't affect your ability to go home all that much, um, but other folks here, you know, they have lives, they have families, they gotta put the kids to bed, feed the horses, all that good stuff, so thank you.
And I, and I guess my initial rebuttal to the, to that is, is that that, the same logic applies to the people who are on the agenda that are waiting till the end of the meeting to speak and they're getting pushed back. So, anyway. Did you have?
No, I was, I was just, I was just thinking.
Yes.
I was just thinking, um.
And you are?
Adria. Adria County. Full ass name, Besta Chegdonno, it's a big one. Um, so I was just thinking that I, I like and appreciate the 30 minutes and it was interesting because my husband and I had a conversation this morning and he was like, well, do you make sure that you get on the first 10? And I'm like, I do, I make sure I get on the first 10. So I show up in time because it's important enough for me to, to speak. So there's that part where if I don't make it on the first 10, I'm assuming that I'm going to stay for a longer duration and I'll stay till the end to speak if it's that important to me. So I, I appreciate your half an hour that you've given because that's about 10 people, three minutes. I, I like that, but I, um, I, I think that if letting everybody who's present speak, if, if they're not, if it's not a priority to get here early and make sure they get on the list, I mean, some of us are here at 5:30, I don't know.
But you also have the option to sign up online.
Yes.
Prior to, that's, that's the best.
So that, that's true, that doesn't hit the, for the top 10.
So how would people feel about packing more people into that half hour by doing two minutes instead of three?
It's really hard to get your feelings out and your nervousness and all of that.
Everybody that's gonna talk has to go to the microphone.
Okay, Adria's here, and she says it's really hard to get it out. I mean, I, it's funny because I, I know that on July 21st, I need to be a little more pregnant, a little less emotional and because I only get two minutes, right? And so I'm, I'm almost like, these, these three minute ones, I actually feel like I actually might get to talk to you and actually there is no communication, which I love this, this, I love this part, but there is none of that in those three minutes. And in those two minutes that will happen on the day when I really feel like it might matter.
And I, and I guess just understand the logic behind, we don't respond, we're not going to take any action and although we do provide some level of feedback, like point you in the right direction or correct or answer a very simple question, we're not engaging intentionally because it's not on the agenda and if the public, if it's not listed on the agenda, we're not supposed to have a substantive conversation and we're not supposed to make a decision. So we're not going to. So.
Hi, Carrie Pickers, I live in county. I just wanted to talk on the timeline that you're talking about. The three minutes is a well-rounded number to be able to get to a point. I think limiting to two minutes, it's really hard for somebody to get everything out that they need to say in two minutes. I'll just use the example of David and I had, there was a discussion about Link. I had three minutes to get as much stuff out of my brain, having experience with Link Transit myself. I didn't cover 34 years of history with Link Transit, but I only had three minutes. And then David had an estimated nine minutes at the end of the meeting to discuss what happened with the bus system. So three minutes, you can get considerable amount of talking points, that's a third more than two minutes. I, I, you know, I mean, I just feel like three minutes is a, a healthy amount of time.
Seems like y'all need to talk to your county commissioners, just saying.
No, the three minutes works out pretty well. It's, um, I've only been on the city council for like over 14 months now, but, um, this comes up with depending on the ebbs and flows throughout the year on hot topics, right? So on city council, those times, 30 minutes for that group is not going to be enough. And so we, the council should make, not should, but we can make a, um, a motion to add time at the end of the meeting. That's how we deal with it whenever it's a hot topic that people want to talk, talk about. On other nights when we don't have a lot of hot topics, we go through the comment pretty, comment pretty, comment period pretty quickly. So I think what we got right now provides some flexibility. So I, yeah.
Any other, any other rules that we want to address?
I was actually just going over the call to order and then the preservation of order. So that's all on the mayor or the mayor pro temp whenever you're out as far as point of order.
I'm trying very hard to follow the process and discussion items and questions, particularly if they're public hearings. So I'm maybe a little militant about that, but.
No, I appreciate it.
At the start of the year.
That's pretty relaxed.
So, um, and similarly, like agenda items, those kinds of things, and I'm a little bit frustrated that nobody wants to deal with the proclamations as a group, but okay.
Good job. So speaking of proclamations, I, this is just me, I like the current thing that we're doing as far as us having it, it's part of our agenda, that people can go back and read it out. There are a lot of, there are a couple of months where we have four or five proclamations and everything like that, and considering people want to get to public comment and we want to get to business, I, I kind of like that. There's an avenue in which people can make actual proclamation outside of city council for, at their events, those kinds of things. So I don't think that should change. I'm not sure if this is that, the venue to be able to say that, so that's just.
What we're doing.
Okay.
Okay, you got direction? Okay. 12A, now there's no public comment because she just gets to talk.
The new 11, the new 11C.
That's this thing?
Yeah.
My packet didn't have it, just saying. Uh, this will be a potential drought relief use of Yakima River Basin water.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, Brian Liski, Public Works Director. Uh, before you tonight is a memorandum of understanding, uh, for your consideration between the City of Ellensburg, um, the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation and the Department of Ecology's Office of the Columbia River. Uh, the City of Ellensburg owns a water right, uh, surface water right, and we call it the contract water right. And there's a potential that has come about, uh, for the city where we can help out with the drought that's impending in this county right now. And so this memorandum would help, help us work with the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation as well as the Department, as well as the Department of Ecology to allow for the release of this, some of this water through the Bureau's Yakima River system. Uh, the Bureau controlled when that water would be released, it would help out with the drought and some of the other things that the Yakima River needs to do in terms of fish and everything else, uh, for these waters, uh, like that are affecting the care and things like that, excuse me, in the valley. And there is, uh, the option in here as well, Department of Ecology, there's been some money, uh, set aside for them to help out with drought relief efforts. So before you tonight, I would recommend that council authorizes the city manager to execute the memorandum of understanding.
So questions for staff? Public comment? At the end of the meeting, yes, you can have mine right now. Okay. Counsel. Motion.
Move to authorize the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding with the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation and Washington State Department of Ecology's Office for the Columbia, Columbia River in a substantially similar form as well as sign all associated documents necessary to finalize this agreement.
Second.
Motion second to authorize city manager to sign the MOU with Bureau of Reclamation for drought relief. Any discussion?
I think this is important, um, and, uh, yeah. It, it, it's a significant step to helping our neighbors and, um, uh, and perfecting our rights, so.
Yeah, the most important thing about this is that we don't, we don't want to risk losing this right, and that's, that's the most important risk associated with this.
This particular agreement is for this year alone.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it does not affect our, uh, the ability for us to provide water to our citizens.
So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, two of both aye opposed. That motion passes. Now order the city manager to report, page 289.
Thank you, I know it's late, so I will be brief. Heidi Baron-Sternaway, City Manager. Um, and just as a reminder, with the last item, there may be additional actions that council will need to take to enact, um, the activities to start using that water right. And so we, and that may need to be done in a timely manner, so there may need to be a special meeting called prior to your July 7th meeting. So we're working diligently with the Bureau and Ecology to start down that road and appreciate your work tonight, um, on the MOU. So we'll keep you posted on that. And, um, also, I, I just handed this out and Mayor may want to speak more to this. There is a request for a letter of support and it's for a group of, um, folks that are working to apply for money through the Conference of Governments, the Point 09 funds to conduct a, is it level of.
Standards of coverage.
Standards of coverage, thank you. Um, through the Kittittas County, um, Community Development Services, um, program. And so it's a letter of support asking for your support to have the mayor sign that letter. And Mayor, I don't know if you want to speak to that.
So effectively it establishes a baseline through objective measures of what the level of emergency services are in Kittittas County with an eye towards future development and the impacts on those services so that we don't get behind the curve in Kittittas County.
Move to approve, Mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the signature on the COG for Standards of Cover letter. Any discussion? None, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, two of both aye opposed. That motion passes.
Okay, and a few more things, um, in the manager's report, just a reminder, lots of activities this week, June 18th, so this Wednesday is Touch a Truck and that's at Rotary Park. There's also, Evergreen Mountain Bike is doing a bike rodeo at the park. Free events, bring your bikes, go have some fun, um, lots of families and kids and lots of really cool things to.
Free helmets as well.
Free helmets as well, thank you. Um, also this week is the Juneteenth event and that is happening, the primary celebration is in the park from 4:00 to 7:00 PM and that's Unity Park downtown. The Kittittas County Historical Museum and Central Washington University Library also have month-long, um, events, but that day, the Historical Museum will have some special programming. Um, listed a lot of the, it's construction season, so there's a lot of roadwork going on around the community. Um, Water Street continues, they started lowering utilities and they do that because it actually creates a better surface, um, and end result, um, with they're doing the grinding and repaving, and after they finish, they'll raise those back up. And as Josh mentioned, tonight, that, that project, um, will hopefully be done in September. So again, lots of phases to that, lots of public notices will go out on that as well. Um, Anderson Road Sewer Project, um, is finally nearing, um, it, I believe we're going to pave, um, some of West Ellensburg this week, so put a closure to some of that project. Um, the rest of the project, we have to wait for the fish window and to finish the work. And, um, this year, just a reminder, we do an annual chip seal, that is scheduled for July 20th through 24th. Typically, we do about a four, four-day chip seal project. This year, we did cut it down to a little over two days, um, so that was to save some money. And, um, the 2026 grant applications are now online and those are our community grants, our Parks Partnership Grants, water quality grants, historic preservation grants and Arts Commission Grants. All of those grant programs have different requirements, so those are all online, um, on the city website and they're due, applications are due the end of August. Um, there is also a preview for the next meeting and, uh, a reminder that, that this year, for the first time in a while, uh, there is a group of organizations that are getting together to host Fourth of July events in Ellensburg, um, which include Arts Walk and Preview or the movie in the park is going to be Independence Day, um, all free, lots of great stuff going on downtown. And I guess one last thing, that is the library provided the Adult Summer Reading Program brochure, you have one at your dais, uh, at your last packet, we actually included the children's, um, program for the summer. So lots of fun stuff happening at the library, um, lots of good ways to keep busy and keep reading.
Okay, Councilmember Miller.
PTAC and Arts Commission, and I would like to request an excused absence for the August 4th meeting, the first meeting of August.
So move. Second.
Motion second to approve, uh, absence for Councilmember Miller, first meeting in August. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, two of both aye opposed. And motion passes.
Thank you. And just one thing, I just wanted to say, uh, for those of us who serve the public, I think we, I would like for everyone to just take a little bit of time and think about our fellow electeds in Minnesota, um, who were targeted for being public servants. Representative Horton and her husband were killed in their home. Uh, State Senator Hoffman, his wife and their daughter were attacked in their home. And, um, I just, it's just, it's a, you know, I, people say this is not the America we live in, but I, I'm afraid to say it is, unfortunately. We need to change that. And I think we can begin by watching or paying attention to our words, our dialogues, both in the public space and in private spaces, social media and other. We all bear a responsibility to do better, I think. So I just wanted to, I know it goes unnoticed, it's not in our jurisdiction, but it does truly affect us all, I think. So, thanks.
Councilmember Palmer, thank you for saying that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer.
Uh, okay, Yakima Basin, I sat in for Nancy, that was awesome, like I finally got up to the wind farm, uh, great information associated with it. As you can imagine, the, uh, the sage step is in jeopardy, especially not only with fires, but even with solar array development. So that's something that I didn't, didn't even really fathom and understand, so that's just something just in our community to be aware of. Affordable housing, we had an update on the Pathways Project, which is going very well. Uh, steer I-90 Committee, uh, we were talking about businesses along the corridor with a special conversation regarding Anderson Hay, uh, Kitcom, I'm gonna let Rich talk to that. Uh, Law and Justice I have coming up, UAC I have coming sub, that's the Utility Advisory Committee, and then the Kittittas, um, Waste, that's, um, that hasn't been scheduled yet. And this is just a personal reminder that the Wall That Heals, that sign up is now available. I know that the city council is on that, but this is more to the general public, there's a sign up available to participate in all aspects of that, I think it's going to be an awesome event. Uh, if you want to participate in actual build construction or be out there to serve, uh, veterans or family members of veterans, it's going to be a great event, so just a reminder of that. That's all.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yeah, still catching up from being out of the country for a little bit. Uh, was at Parks, uh, last week and, uh, that's it for me right now.
Councilmember Busham.
Well, Heidi stole my thunder about the library stuff, so, um, you can also pick up their great schedule for the summer with all the programs that they're offering at the library, or if somebody wants to take mine, because I have several. Um, and they do have an adult and kids reading program, so it's pretty fun. For lodging tax, we did not have a quorum, unfortunately, so our meeting did not happen. And due to a slight medical emergency, it was one of my own kiddos, I missed Kitcom and the Parks this past meetings.
Uh, yes, I had DEI Commission, uh, meeting, uh, and I attended the Developmental Disabilities, uh, Board meeting, uh, for the mayor and really enjoyed that committee, the conversation and they're very active and they're very well organized, um, particularly have some housing issues that they're very concerned about, so that caught my attention. Uh, and then I, I was invited to, um, go down to the Pathways Project, I think because I'm on the County Housing Committee. Uh, we had a chance to meet the developers, the funders, the people who've designed, and we kind of walked the property and looked inside the building, uh, that's there and, uh, so that was, that was a really nice, uh, thing. It's going to be quite a project when it's ready to go. Very nice.
I, uh, attended the airport, the county's airport advisory committee, um, and we met out at the new, uh, fixed base operator, the FBO, um, which is public space, uh, and just, it's, it's very comfortable, uh, two stories, you can sit on the upper deck, watch the planes coming in and out. Uh, it, it's, um, Mount Stewart Aviation is the, the new FBO operator, they sell the gas and stuff there, um, and, and trying to build that, um, to add more services. They have office space to rent, uh, so if you're looking for. to rent, so if you're looking for a small office, you might think about going out there, it's not just aviation-related services, they have a, someone who's cutting hair, and an accountant, and some other things, renting those spaces. And, yeah, it's, it's quite nice. I attended an air quality workshop, they're seeking input on what kinds of projects we could do in Ellensburg, because we're an overburdened community, and it's not just about the quality of the air, it's also about the demographics and the low incomes and things like that. I attended a wastewater treatment plant tour, I kind of, I've been there before, but kind of wanted to refresher, just in anticipation of the sewer plan update that the Utility Advisory Commission will be looking at coming up, and I attended online a resource adequacy workshop, so, a bunch of people talking about energy and what our future like, looks like this summer, and, you know, there's, there's agreements, there's a lot of sharing of resources between the, the producers and, and the different utilities in the whole western half of the United States, that, that kind of buffers us in some ways. They can send power where it's needed at a moment's notice, but if we have extreme weather this summer, we're in trouble.
Yeah.
I think that was, that was the bottom line. And I need to ask, what year did we replace the roof on the pool and update the HVAC system? I don't have that information in front of me. And how much, that was 99? So that was, that was a while ago, okay. And, but we spent 10 million on the pool 20 years ago, and, so, okay.
With other good news, it's unprecedented, I've been requested three times for wildland incident management teams already this year, and we've had more red flag days this month than we typically have in half of a summer. So that's not boding well. I did attend a state 911 meeting in Vancouver, and this might be interested in Candice, they are creating the capability for me to actually shut some numbers off for 911, I can keep people from calling 911. That has all sorts of implications, but there's reasons why you get robocallers doing it.
Right.
Yeah. And you get people who are trying to gum the system up. So you can send them away for a while, that one's not going to be implemented for a little while, but it's coming. I will speak in Kennewick on small city disaster management and preparation in, next week, and I'm getting to the one you're not gonna like, so I'll get there. Do we have legitimate issues with safety with the pool, with stuff falling from the ceiling, because if we do...
No.
Okay.
With our assessment, no.
Okay. I did privately help out with KVH's messaging for, because they have a tax measure on the deal, and they're gonna contact us and ask us to consider, which we as a board, or a council, can do so. Had the coffee with council a couple Saturdays ago, and here's the one you're not gonna like. I want to actually know what the legal risk is for DEI stuff, like, that needs to be a priority, as we...
So I would just add, our staff have been aware and watching this, and so we can present that to you, absolutely.
Sorry, Chris.
We're ready.
Okay, good. I, I think that we need to actually know what those risks are as we, as we move forward.
Talking about, like, the federal funding issues?
Yes. Any, anything associated legal or financial risks that you see associated with what's going on in D.C. versus what would impact our city directly?
I would, I would add to that, just what I've observed is, there are some current, there's some litigation currently in force, and some from within Washington, so the question is, how might those play out, potentially, because they'll probably end up...
You're assuming predictions.
And so on, so...
Okay. We're adjourned, thank you.